Well, good evening, everyone. All right. Just for the record, if anybody can hear me, just for the record, I have been here for just over six years. And this is the first time that I have gabbled and there's still been noise in the room. And I'm sharing that with you, not as a complaint, but I'm really excited that so many of you are that excited. So a lot of our meetings are pretty exciting. But somehow, right before the meeting starts, everybody gets into this hush. So anyway, great to have you guys here. I'm thrilled at all the energy and excitement in the room, and I certainly understand why. Tonight's meeting is a regular school board meeting, and tonight is January 28, 2025. I bet all of you knew that. I'm going to do a quick roll call, because we have a couple of members who I believe are joining us telephonically. So starting with Vice Chair.
Good evening.
Member Douglas.
Good evening.
Member Vanos. Member Gallo.
Good evening.
Member Felder.
Good evening.
Member Salamanca.
Good evening.
Welcome. Member Ferrant.
Good evening.
Awesome. Thank you all. As a reminder, board members will now be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus our full attention on the matters before us. To my fellow board members and district staff and members of the public, when speaking, please speak directly into the microphone. Make sure it is turned on, obviously, but we want to make sure our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you. Again, thank you for participating in tonight's meeting. We will now begin with observing a moment of silence. I'll invite you to join us, as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we recognize many of the people that are in the room with us, let me start out with a matter of business. Dr. Vasquez, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. We have one personnel item that will need to be moved to non-consent. Employee JR.
Okay. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda as suggested by the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by the Vice Chair, seconded by a member of Vanos. All in favor, please say aye. Members Salamanca?
Aye.
And Member Ferrant. Okay, she may have fallen off. So this is a part of the meeting that we all get excited about and that I know I look forward to, and that's when we get to recognize our staff, our students, and our valuable community partners. First, I'm pleased to have special guests from HCA Healthcare with us this evening. HCA Healthcare is one of the nation's largest providers of healthcare services, with more than 185 hospitals and 2,400 clinics, centers, and health agencies in the U.S. and the United Kingdom. Tonight, the Foundation for OCPS will be receiving a $20,000 grant from the HCA Healthcare Foundation. The funds from the Career Pathways to a Healthier Florida Grant will be used to help high school students prepare for healthcare careers through medical academy programs. The check presentation was postponed because of Hurricane Milton back in October, so I'd now like to invite HCA's CEO Wendy Brandon to the podium to tell us more about the grant. Welcome.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Wendy Brandon, the CEO of UCF Lake Nona Hospital, and here with me tonight is Jean Chalgo, our Director of Communications and Community Outreach. It is a pleasure for us to come and present you with surprise, not $20,000, but a $60,000 grant. So we represent the HCA Healthcare Foundation, and we're presenting this check to the Orange County Public Schools Foundation to launch the Healthcare Careers Programs as part of the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations. As the nation's largest provider of healthcare, HCA Healthcare has a long history of providing healthy pathways for our students. The statewide initiative aims to prepare students for in-demand healthcare roles through an enhanced healthcare academy offering. One of our company's top community engagement strategies is to increase access and opportunities for healthcare careers. In June of 2024, the HCA Healthcare Foundation donated $1 million to the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations to further their Career Pathways Program, which focuses on nursing and allied health tracks, and includes work-based learning, healthcare career exploration, and industry certifications. The overall grant is funding 15 local education foundation programs throughout Florida. We stand behind the good work being done here in our Orange County Public Schools, and we're proud to walk alongside you and help support our extraordinary teachers, staff, and leadership, as together we work to shape the future of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get you along with the foundation? If you could come forward for a photo? And I don't know, there is a check. Okay. There is a large check. If you could come forward, we'd love to get a photo. The check is, is that actually three times larger? Well, that was exciting news. Thank you to the HCA Healthcare for partnering with our foundation. We have such a shortage, not only here, but nationwide, of healthcare professionals, and we need all the support we can get, so we are really excited about this opportunity. Next, I would like to acknowledge district-wide winners of our 2024-25 Stellar Awards. We celebrated the Best of OCPS during a magnificent gala at the Rosen Shingle Creek earlier this month. That included honoring 510 of our honorees, 19 finalists, and five district-wide winners. Each of these people, along with everyone who works here in Orange County Public Schools in whatever capacity you serve, they are heroes. They do exceptional things in our departments and our schools every day, and they change lives in ways none of us can ever imagine. If each of the winners would please stand as I call your name, we'd like to applaud you. All right, this year's winners are Therese Fussner, Teacher of the Year. Danielle McKay. Danielle, where are you? Support Person of the Year. Next, Merlene Jackson Kimball, Principal of the Year. There she is in the back. Taylor Boyer, Assistant Principal of the Year. And Jesse Outing, District Administrator of the Year. Each of you have put our district's values into action every day. As board members, we are aware of the amazing work that you do and your sense of mission. Congratulations and thank you to each of you. I hope that, I wish that we had recorded it and we could play it, because it was so phenomenal hearing about each one of you. And I think it was the largest attendance that we've ever had. Does anybody have a number for that? Yeah, it was just huge. And again, it was just an incredible event. So I also want to thank Dr. Vasquez, I want to thank you, I want to thank the entire team that helped put that together. I know we have Jason, we have Scott, and their whole team, and I shouldn't start down that path because I can't list them all, but what an amazing event. But nothing compares to the amazing people that we are honoring, so thank you to each one of you. And I know it just gives me goosebumps, hearing the stories, hearing the incredible stories. All right, can we get all of you all up for one last photo? All right. Zoom in at the end on those shoes.
Wait, let me see the back. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, cool jacket.
Whoa. I'm gonna do, I gotta do that.
The t-shirt?
Yeah, right down the middle.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
You're good at sewing.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, we sure do. So, yes, we have Peggy Guste from Congressman Maxwell's office. Oh, and Congressman Soto's office as well. Wonderful. This is, that's amazing. No, no. Oh, my gosh.
Thank you so much.
This is, this is such a high honor.
They deserve it.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever, I don't think we've ever had a Congress member here or the representative. This is so cool. Thank you so much.
Good, good, good. Look happy. Stay there, hold on. And everybody has their fold in, yours is open, so just go ahead and just get the gold seal out there. With uniform. Big smile, look happy. One more. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, and Peggy and Roxanne, thank you all also. You do so much work behind the scenes, and it's such an honor to have you representing our congressman. All right, Pam Jones, the Community Relations Representative for Congress, oh, sorry, Pam Jones is not here. So next, I want to move on to recognize our Exceptional Student Education Department's Senior Leadership Team. Their recognition back in October was also delayed. The entire staff, which is led by Executive Leader Wendy Ivory, has done an excellent job improving the student experience as well as performance. Here are some highlights. The team has helped reduce state complaints with negative finding from 47% in 2021 to just 18% this last year. That's amazing number. I know, I'm sure the, I'm sure the audience is thrilled to hear this. I can tell you, this board is very excited to hear this. We were concerned in 2021, but have made incredible progress. They've also overseen an 80% reduction in restraint incidents. Also, huge, again, huge issue for the board and tremendous progress. And Dr. Vasquez, we want to recognize as well your leadership and determination to bring us to this level, so thank you. And a new project is bearing fruit after its first year. The effort aims to help middle school students achieve alongside, these are our middle school students that are in our ESE programs, have to achieve alongside their peers without disabilities. We've seen a 4% increase in ELA proficiency and a gain of 8% in math proficiency. So those numbers are helping to narrow that gap between our ESE student population and the rest of our population. Also, new this year is a pilot program for high school gifted students to receive direct consultation from a gifted endorsed teacher. Sounds like a great idea. I also want to mention that ESE has done an excellent job prioritizing hiring for school positions and has offered thousands of training sessions for our staff. Thank you to the entire team, and thank you for the leadership that you bring to that department every day, Ms. Ivory. If each of you would please come up as I call your name. We have Mary, otherwise Katie Boyd. Where is she?
She's sick.
She's sick, okay. Leigh Austin? Leigh Austin? Milana? Milana? Baishilia? There you are. Ian Gazuntite? Do I, am I getting it wrong all this time? Oh, okay, I thought you yelled something out. I've been calling you that for six years. I got it right? Oh, thank heavens. Oh, boy, that would have been, that would have been embarrassing, more embarrassing than usual for me. Tawana? Leigh Wenz? Next, Carmen McNally? Brittany Mills? I'm loving these pink jackets. Right, Elizabeth Padilla? Sylvia Schaffer? Victoria Singh? Terranisha Young? She's out? Okay. John Sareka? Catherine Anderson? Danielle Barney? Oh, my goodness, what is going on? Yes. Oh, my gosh. Samuel Davis? He's, oh, he's not at a conference. Okay. Tricia Phillip McGee? And last but not least, their fearless leader, Wendy Ivory. What happened? Oh, I'm so sorry, Michelle. And what's Michelle's last name? Rotillis. Michelle, welcome. All right, board. These are amazing people doing amazing things. Yes.
So while they are honoring ESE, I just wanted to give a shout out to Sarah Kapeski in my office, who works very, very closely with them. So I just wanted to recognize her as well.
Yes, she does, thank you. Member Salamanca, did you want to be recognized at this time? I see her name up there, and I'm not sure. Okay, all right. Okay, so now I would like to acknowledge Timber Creek High Senior Zachary Martinez. Where is Zachary? So a little bit about Zachary. Zachary is a student ambassador for the High School High Tech Program, HSHT. The Able Trust, which is a public charity that promotes employment opportunities for persons with disabilities, has taken their statewide transition program further by identifying and selecting program ambassadors. The ambassadors are Florida public school seniors with disabilities who have experience with public speaking and professional development training. They also maintain good grades and demonstrate socialization in professional environments. The ambassadors also have to be active participants in the Able Trust High School Program. The program helps students bridge the gap between high school and work, higher education, and their adult lives. Ambassadors were chosen based on a video submission and interviews with the selection committee. During the school year, the ambassadors have had an opportunity to meet local business leaders and give presentations to the Able Trust Board of Directors and improve their communication skills. Each ambassador also receives a $500 scholarship to further their education or workforce training. Zachary is one of six ambassadors chosen from a statewide pool of applicants to be the face of HSHT. Congratulations, Zachary.
Can you take a picture?
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot the picture. Okay, absolutely. Thank you, Angie. All right. Who are we missing?
So he's the nephew of Mr. Martinez.
So he's the nephew of Mr. Martinez.
Wow.
Are you, are you a Yankee fan?
It runs deep.
That's so funny.
I thought about that too. Congratulations. Oh my God.
Are you the only, are you the only uncle? Is he your only uncle? Oh, you're the favorite. Oh, you are the favorite then. Okay.
The favorite uncle. All right, don't step away just yet. I, I'm, I'm just blown away. That is so amazing out of six. So let me call on Member Gallo for a few comments.
I just want to say congratulations. What a huge honor that is and it's so great to represent Timber Creek as your school board member. And I'm sure if Salamanca was watching, she would think so too. But seriously, I just wanted to congratulate you and say job well done. I'm so very proud of you. And I wanted to let the audience know that, that you were the nephew of our very own Jose Martinez. So that's just super cool. And I love, I love, I love all the accomplishments from our students, but when it's volunteer, when it's like charity work and it's volunteer work and you're given of your times to make other people's lives better, there's just nothing else that you can do for humankind. So thank you.
And before we move on, we've, we've recognized the leadership under Wendy Ivory for our ESE department, but I also want to recognize every one of our teachers who works with these students. They are making such an incredible impact. And from somebody as old as I am, I have seen such a tremendous change in society and It starts right here in school and that changes everything and it's just so cool. So with that, thank you to all of our teachers and all of our students. We believe in you and we're proud of you. Okay, why don't you take over for a minute, Vice Chair?
Okay. So we're right here?
Yep. It gets easy from here.
Yeah. So next we have a school board spotlight. Each month, a school board member honors an employee in their district. These employees have shown exceptional dedication and contributed to the success of our students. We are grateful for every one of our devoted staff members and this is one more way that we are pleased to honor them. I'd like to invite Vicki Elaine Felder, who represents District Five, to tell us about the OCPS staff member that she has selected for her school board spotlight, which was originally scheduled for October. Member Felder?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Bird. I'd like to honor OCPS's Senior State Reporting Data Specialist. Her name is Pamela Moore. She fussed at me and said she didn't want to be recognized. I said, you don't have a choice. She goes beyond the call of duty to support her students and our students. Pamela has been consistently praised for her ability to assist schools effectively by collecting and submitting data on students and staff so OCPS stays in compliance with federal and state laws and regulations. Pamela's contributions, dedication and expertise have also made her an invaluable asset to the K through 12 state reporting department. Besides compiling data, my favorite, she also coaches Jones High School's cheerleading team. I was once a cheerleader. Pamela ensues the cheerleaders and she makes sure, makes sure that the cheerleaders attend camps and obtain additional skills like choreography and tumbling so they can enhance their phenomenal performances. She reminds the girls daily that they're students first and athletes second. Pamela's cheerleading seniors have a 100, ooh baby, 100% graduation rate. Yeah, that's, yeah, come on. And some have continued with experiences they have never had before. One of those times was an out of state cheerleading trip in September 2023 that I helped, yes, I did, I helped fund. Jones High School's football team, go Tigers! Yes, played against Our Lady of Good Counsel High School in Only, Maryland. The girls went along to cheer the team on during that big game. This was the first time many of the girls have ever flown on a plane. During the trip, the students toured the U.S. Capitol, the National Museum of African-American History and Culture. Pam, thank you. Thank you for being an educational role model in leading our students to success. Please come forward to have your photo taken with the school board and the little cheerleaders and you folk, come on.
And Pam, in addition to your recognition here, I would present you one of my former school students, who were named Felder. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna stand next to you. My friend, I need to get my seat.
Yes. Mr. and Mrs. Williams, come on. Oh, yeah, bring the family, bring everybody, come on. Family, come on, everybody. Y'all know Mom is here, oh, please, come on. Mama, sister, everybody. Mama, Kate? Mama, Kate, Tasha, yeah, come on. She loves them up here. Yes. This is so great. Both your charities give a lot to Greg and your baby. Yes, yes. Thank you so much. So now for my second recognition, I am so thrilled to recognize this young lady. She's a community worker. Her name is Mrs. Macyne Isom. She lives near Washington Shores Elementary and we used to have a hard time trying to get crossing guards and people to watch our kids and Macyne would take it upon herself to go out there and direct traffic and tell the people, you can't block this street because the kids are coming this way. So before we had our school crossing guards over there, she would direct the traffic and ensure that our students were safe when crossing Rogers Drive and Wooden Boulevard on their way to school. And she would always provide snacks for the kids after school. She participates in Washington Shores Elementary School Grandparents' Day every year. She provides the students with the cold drinks and snacks away from when they're on their way from school in the heat. And she just loves Washington Shores and she loves Merle, the principal of Washington Shores. Please come up front and have your photo taken with the school board and I too have a token of appreciation for you. Thank you, Ms. Macyne Isom.
I don't even give off the principal. Come on up.
Good to see you.
Good morning.
I appreciate all you here.
Wonderful.
Yes, this is Jones High School graduate and a daughter, of course.
Absolutely, yeah.
She's gonna make some comments.
Yeah.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Come on. I can speak. I was the cheerleader.
Plus years, a young child wanted to be a cheerleader and I was the captain. And our mother, Mrs. Felder, which was my teacher, asked if Vicki Felder could be the mascot. Not knowing today, when you impress young children, she would represent me today and let me know how much she appreciates what I do. Not only that I do at the Washington Shores, Carver Middle School, they all have to be in line with you. And sometimes I tutor them on my fort and that I know that counts. Now, thank you for recognizing me.
Wow, wow, wow. Macyne, come on back up. I'd love to have a photo with, with just you and Member Felder. What a, what a great piece of history, right? Hey, ladies. Stay there.
Oh, I thought it was just the two.
I know, but it's gonna look silly with us sitting there. It's like, huh? I, I know, I said just the two of them, but I, I think it looks disrespectful. Wow, cool.
Thank you, Macyne.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. I know. Congratulations Pamela and thank you for being both an excellent employee and a mentor to our young women. And Macyne, thank you for going the distance and assisting Washington Shores Elementary School students on and away from campus. And thank you for sharing that piece of history. It's just, it's just amazing, isn't it, to see and to have the same people here to celebrate how much of an impact they've made. I know that so many people that work here in Orange County Public Schools will never be able to see and note all of the impacts they've made, but the times that we get to celebrate those couple that we can point to, I think it reminds all of, all of, I want to say us, but not me, all of you of what you're doing and how important it is. So, thank you for sharing. All right. Last but not least, I would like to recognize Lake George Elementary School Music Teacher, Katie Grace Miller. Katie was named Exemplary Music Teacher of the Year for 2025 by the Florida Music Education Association, known as FMEA. She received the award at the FMEA Professional Learning Conference in Tampa just a few weeks ago. So this is even more special because her principal, Lauren Watson, was named the FMEA Administrator of the Year for 2024 at last year's conference. Something in the water. This, Ms. Miller is a product of OCPS, of course, and has worked at the school district for the past 20 years. Her music educator journey began at Bonneville Elementary where she started the Bonneville Bravo Performance Ensemble. And at Lake George, she directed students in, this is so amazing to me, Aladdin, Frozen, The Jungle Book and Willy Wonka. Pretty cool. She also teaches the after school music program, the Lake George Jammers. Not only is Katie Grace a well-established educator, she's also an author who has published six music-related books. She was nominated for the Elementary Educator of the Year Award by Southwood Elementary School's Music Teacher, Christina Torres. Christina felt she would not be the educator or person she is today without the guidance and influence of Ms. Miller. Christina also said Katie Grace was the most deserving of the award because she's always sharing her gifts and talents with the students and her colleagues. Katie Grace, congratulations on receiving this amazing accolade and for being musically, the musical inspiration by giving from your heart. Come on up, Katie.
Thank you. Thank you. Proud. Proud. Okay.
Go Gators!
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
I love you guys.
My art teacher, I think.
Oh.
Ms. Scow, it's okay, I'll let you scan her QWERTIS.
Okay. She's here.
Who are we missing?
Oh, my principal, our leader, our literacy night was moved to tonight and I was like, they need you more there than I need you here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, it's been fun, it's been exciting, and now it's gonna get a little boring. You're welcome to stay, but if I were you, I'd go out and celebrate. So, oh, no, we're not finished celebrating. Oh, we're not, oh, we are? Oh, okay, okay. Okay. So at the last meeting...
The speaker. Not yet.
Huh? What?
No, we're fine.
Okay, okay. So at the last meeting, there was this whole crowd and I thought they were gonna be all of these administrators and it was one. It was, you weren't, you weren't here, but it was amazing. I was like, that entire thing. And anyway, so I do want to mention, we would normally recognize celebration and observations, but all of those proclamations were adopted by a vote of the board on August 27th at our 2024 board meeting and that list will remain on the agenda for the entire school year. Next up, we don't have, I also, oh, I want to call on Amy McHale, President-elect of the Orange County Association of School Administrators. Are you here? And following that, Mr. Pollitt is here, but I don't see you on the agenda. Are you speaking? A little bit. Okay, good. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Jacobs, School Board Members, Superintendent Vasquez and Deputy Superintendent R. Brewster. As you mentioned, I am Amy McHale, the proud principal of Sun Ridge Middle and it's my honor to represent Ocasas as the president this evening. We just had a switch at the last meeting from Mr. Turner to myself. First and foremost, I want to extend my gratitude for the warm welcome you offered to me at the last meeting and I genuinely look forward to collaborating closely with each of you to support our school-based administrators, which ultimately supports our students and our communities. As we've outlined in our strategic goals over the past few years, one of our primary focuses is to support school-based administrators in creating and maintaining a positive school culture and climate. We firmly believe that happy teachers lead to happy students. It's essential that our educators feel a deep sense of belonging on our campuses and among their colleagues. To foster this, we encourage camaraderie through various social activities, including monthly challenges, spirit weeks, fun games that bring laughter and unity to our staff. Additionally, we believe that fostering a true sense of teamwork can greatly contribute to our teachers feeling supported and valued. By engaging in common planning sessions through the professional learning community model, we believe that teachers can focus on instructional track strategies, address individual student needs and enhance their own practices collaboratively. I know that the board participated in a presentation earlier today that delved into the true meaning of a PLC. And tonight, Ocasas wanted to come and tell you that we fully support the revitalization of professional learning communities within our schools as a powerful catalyst for increasing student achievement and enhancing school culture overall. We are confident that as teachers recognize the value of... learning communities within our schools as a powerful catalyst for increasing student achievement and enhancing school culture overall. We are confident that as teachers recognize the value of working interdependently to provide rich instruction and establish positive learning environments, our schools will truly soar. Educators who embrace collaboration and collectively address the three big ideas while answering the four essential questions will cultivate a growth model that everyone, our entire OCPS team, our schools, and our communities can take pride in. On a celebratory note, although they just left, Ocasas would also like to take a moment to recognize the OCPS Principal of the Year, Merle Jackson Kimball, as well as the OCPS Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Taylor Boyer. We'd also like to congratulate all the finalists and the nominees. All of their exemplary work sets a positive standard for our school-based administrators, and we deeply appreciate their dedication. Thank you so much for your support, school-based administration and Ocasas, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next, I'd like to recognize Ron Pollard, President of the Orange Education Support Professionals, for some comments.
Okay, since I said, and I told Leanne, it's probably back there, that I wouldn't be speaking, but I wanted to give a shout-out to all of the honorees at the Stella Awards. I thought, including all of you all too, I thought everybody looked great in all that glitter and shiny. Yeah, we were all hugging each other, and it was a great time. It's good to be recognized by your peers. The small thing I wanted to say is, February is the Love the Bus Month. So, if any of you all would like to show up at the Bus Compounds, I didn't hear anybody say it, I would be glad to show up too, except for the 4th and the 5th, and I think that's when Pine Hills Compound, I gotta be entirely assed. But other than that, I would love to show these bus drivers, bus drivers, monitors, transportation employees, that we really appreciate them too. So, that was it.
Thank you. I was afraid for a minute there you were gonna ask us to come out and drive a bus.
I wouldn't ask you to do something I wouldn't do.
No. Thank you.
That's too much.
Yeah, Member Ferrant is on the line, and I don't know what it's about. Member Ferrant? Member Ferrant?
Chair Jacobs, I'm sorry. I was just really, I think Ms. Miller probably has left already, but I had been waiting and wanted to just tell her congratulations. So proud of her work.
She's still here.
And I got to see.
She's still here.
Awesome. So proud of you, Ms. Miller, and loved being able to see firsthand your incredible work, and keep up the great work, and I look forward to continuing to come out and see you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I didn't recognize you sooner. Mr. Pollard, thank you so much. Also with us is Mr. McCracken, and I don't know, I don't think he is wanting to speak today, but he's here as President of the Classroom Teachers Association. He is at, I think, every single one of our meetings, and maybe he will say something, yes. He is so dedicated to his role, and we appreciate you for that.
Thank you. I wasn't going to, and you know I usually come prepared with words, and I don't have that. So, I was just gonna just quickly say, and I've mentioned it to some of you, we are hearing from a lot of teachers who are asking for some guidance from the district regarding immigration. And I know the district has sent a memo, I think, a couple of times to principals, and so I would just encourage, maybe there's some kind of adaptation of that that could be given to teachers and other staff as well so that they know what's going on. They're afraid for their students, even for things outside of their control. For example, what happens when students are at bus stops? And what happens when someone shows up at the school? So, we're getting a lot of questions about that, so I'd encourage some kind of communication.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. Dr. Vasquez?
Certainly, and thank you for bringing that up. What we're planning to do, and actually, we have a couple of board members that have approached me about doing like an FAQ, so we plan to discuss that a little bit later today, but we can also share that with both you and Mr. Pollard, and you can help us disseminate the information to our employees, because you're right, it is a very scary time, and they want to be able to help, but at the same time, they're scared of what may happen. So, we'll be able to finish that, I believe, this week, and it'll be shared with both of you.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Vasquez. I believe, no, 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 no. Oh, you want to introduce your advisory council. We're not finished celebrating. Yay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I just want to say that we do have amazing students across our entire district. This year, I've added, in addition to my student advisory council that meets a few times a year, I've added student town halls. And I believe Boone was the very first one that I attended. And we really are getting some incredible insights from our students. Again, I invite you, if you're able to come to any of them, you're more than welcome to sit in and listen. We will be presenting to the board the results of their feedback, but Boone was the first one, and they set the bar very high. They've got incredible leadership at their school, always looking for different ways to engage not just the students that are there, but really to be involved in their community. And so, I am so excited to introduce two of the leaders from Boone High School, and it's Mary Michaels and Delaney Anderson. Did I pronounce your names correctly?
Yes.
Thanks for making it easy. And their principal is here as well, Mr. Maestray, so thank you for coming. And ladies, you have the podium.
There we go. Okay, ready? Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and be able to present to you all. Today, we'll be discussing the initiative that Boone High School has taken to relieve stress in our student population. But first, to introduce ourselves, my name is Mary Michaels, and I'm the senior class treasurer at Boone High School.
And my name is Delaney Anderson, and I'm the student body secretary at Boone High School. We call this project Braves at Play: Chasing the Stress Away. The initiative that we have taken is that we have various games and activities for students to participate in during A and B lunches every Friday. These games take place both indoors and outdoors, and our intention is that every student will have something available that they can enjoy.
Having Friday games can be helpful because it is something that kids can look forward to taking place every single week. It also ends the week on a positive note. Playing games can help to release feel-good hormones in the brain, such as dopamine, which contributes to emotions such as pleasure and satisfaction, which can help relieve the potential school stress.
Playing games also gives students an opportunity to socialize with their friends, laugh, and have fun, which also releases endorphins to relieve stress and uplift moods while stimulating their brain activity and giving individuals a brain break from their screens.
They can also take a student's mind off of their negative things that may have occurred throughout the week and help them transfer the stress into some fun or healthy competition with their peers.
Here are some pictures that we have taken from our Friday games so far. These images show some of the indoor and outdoor games that kids could participate in. Kids play games such as Sorry, Connect Four, and Mankala Indoors, and kids outside were throwing around a football. We hope Braves at Play: Chasing the Stress Away can help many of Boone students relieve potential stress and increase their overall well-being. We also hope that many other schools might be able to take inspiration from us as well.
We have already seen the positive impacts of our initiative. Engaging in games has encouraged students to communicate, collaborate, and build relationships. Students have also developed teamwork and empathy skills.
Games have also provided a break from academic pressures, allowing students to relax and recharge. This has led to reduced stress and anxiety contributing to overall well-being.
Many games require strategic thinking and creativity. By playing these games, students have an opportunity to enhance their problem-solving abilities and stimulate their creativity, which has academic benefits.
Playing games together has fostered a sense of belonging and inclusion. It has created opportunities for students to connect with peers they might not otherwise interact with, which build a stronger school community.
Based on our most recent school student survey data, our student body's overall sense of belonging was 75%. Additionally, 76% of our student body responded positively when asked about their perception of our school climate. Finally, 91% of our student body indicated they have at least one friend at school that they can hang out with. We know that our initiative, Braves at Play: Chasing the Stress Away, has positively impacted that data, and we look forward to continuing this initiative to ensure that students have an outlet on campus.
Thank you for your attention, and have a wonderful rest of your day. Now, I want to introduce the Braves at Boone Dance Team. Go Braves!
Good, good, stay there. Hold on. Now, if you can transfer the palms to the back row so they have them. You guys just hold them up, no dancing required.
All in.
Don't make them cry. Good, one more, stay there. Perfect, thank you.
Member Ferrant, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Boone High School. I'm so proud of each of you, the students, to Dr. Maestray, and all the faculty and staff who are going the extra mile to make the school culture and climate exceptional. So, great job. I love hearing everything that you're doing and seeing the photos and the impact that you're having on the students. So, thank you so much, so excited to continue hearing all the great things that you're doing.
Wonderful, thank you. Next, Mr. Palmerini, do you actually expect to be recognized?
I was chiming in for Member Ferrant.
Okay, for anybody who might have just tuned in, we had an opportunity with our cheerleaders from Boone, for all of us up here at the dais to get, to have our, what are they called?
Pom-poms.
Pom-poms, I thought that was it, yeah. Pom-poms, and Mr. Palmerini didn't accept his.
Madam Chair, if I can explain, a lot of people, when the photos are taken of me around here, they circulate them in ways that are not very nice. So, I was not going to give them the opportunity to do that. Mr., Dr. Armbruster and I may have been compared to Statler and Waldorf at some point from The Muppets, so, yeah, people do things to photos.
Mm-hmm. Yes, they do. And Dr. Armbruster, Deputy Superintendent, I want to congratulate you for your courage and spirit. I also, I'm gonna call on Member Thanos real quickly, but talk about versatility in dancing, right? That was pretty darn cool. And I don't know who the choreographer was, but whoever the choreographer was, congratulations, that was phenomenal. And I also want to know if Dr. Vasquez and I can sign up for dance lessons? What do you say?
My body doesn't move that way anymore, but I'm game if you are.
Yeah, I've seen you dance, your body, you do just fine. All right, Member Thanos?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I know I'm not the school board member for Boone because they're on the wrong side of Kaylee, but I am a Boone mom, and so just wanted to give a shout-out to the students who are here, And so just wanted to give a shout out to the students who are here, who have participated in student government and student advisory council, and also to the amazing principal of Boone, Dr. Maestrae. I can tell you from personal experience, he is at everything. He is at every orchestra concert. He is at not just every football game, but he is at swim meets and water polo and early, early cross-country meets that are nowhere close to our school. He's there. And he's there at 6:00 AM, 6:30 in the morning. So, you know, I know we talk about how important school culture is, and Dr. Maestrae and his team are just doing such an incredible job over there. I was going to an Edgewater basketball game this Friday because Edgewater is one of my schools, and I had on my Edgewater sweatshirt. And my girls, two who go to Boone and one who will go to Boone, refused to be in the picture with me because they did not want to be associated at all with Edgewater. It was all Boone. So you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you to students and thank you to you and your team, Dr. Maestrae.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bird.
Yes, thank you. I just have a quick question for our two presenters from Boone. First of all, you did a great job. Thank you for sharing with us the fun Friday. One more time, what is the name?
Braves at Play: Chasing the Stress Away.
Oh, my gosh. I love that. It's so cool. And it's such a great message to teach the kids, right? That you have to take a break and have fun and chase the stress away, right? I love it. My question for you is, do you have a, do you have kind of a plan in place or like what do you guys do when you see kids maybe who don't have, aren't involved or maybe like, maybe new kids that come to the school? Like, do you guys have a plan in place for that or what do you do for that?
So right now, we haven't done like specifically anything for that. I mean, obviously putting out the board games allows students to connect, but that's a really good idea. Honestly, if SGA members, we have fourth, fifth, and sixth period SGA. So our fifth period is during A lunch and then six periods during B lunch. So SGA members could go to lunches and interact with people who are sitting alone or don't look like they're having such a great day. I think that'd be a really cool idea that we could implement at our school.
Well, good. I did, I really wasn't saying it to give you the idea, but I'm glad I, I really was just for my own curiosity sake, because I know in some of, I've heard from some kids in my school when I meet with them that sometimes, you know, they struggle with that, you know, having someone to sit with or someone to spend time with at lunch and during breaks. And I know that when we did the cell phone policy, that was a big issue for a lot of kids because they relied on that phone for their company during lunch. And so I'm just trying to like explore different ways that we can help those kids, those particular kids. So I love the idea of, you know, you guys maybe putting your student government to work to spot those kids that might need a little extra friendship.
Yeah. Thanks for that idea.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Your comments about the presentation are just so spot on. It was, there was so much work, obviously, that went into that. But at my age, I'm sitting there taking the lesson, you know, and saying, yeah, that's right. This is really important. And there's, you know, there's science behind it. It's not just, I think I feel good or I'm having a better time. There's so much beyond that. So thank you for that. Yeah, that's really cool. Because, yeah, I know, I know the Vice Chair and I were both up here going, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So sometimes I will tell you, this is such a great board to work with, that there are times when we, at the beginning of almost every meeting, you know, we feel that sense of we relax, we enjoy, and just kind of our version of play. So, yeah. Okay. With that, I think we are ready to move on. Okay. I think we're going to have a strategic plan update. All right. This is actually when it's less exciting, but less fun. What should I say?
Well, on that positive note, we are very happy and pleased to present to you our mid-year strategic plan update. Some of our data you'll find is moving, yes, in the wrong, no, we're doing, yes. Yes, a portrait of, you're looking at me and I'm thinking I have the wrong, it's on our strategic plan. You're right. On your one, sorry. The Chair kind of.
I'm so sorry.
Off with, not so good.
So. It's good. It's not quite as much fun. It's exciting, exhilarating, but just a wee bit less fun.
So we are coming to the end of our strategic plan 2025 in just a few months. And for, for those of you that were around, we really started this right as the pandemic hit. And so we have taken a little bit different approach with the renovation of our strategic plan OCPS 2030. You're going to hear feedback that we received from various stakeholders that helped us create the Portrait of a Graduate. And the Portrait of a Graduate really has driven our strategic plan goals and objectives. The board has had extensive conversation around our strategic plan, around our vision, our mission, our values. And I'm so proud of the time that we've spent together and what we are proposing as our strategic plan. And all of that, of course, has been under the leadership of Dr. Border. And I am going to turn it over to him right now.
Good evening, Chair Jacobs, Members of Board, Superintendent Vasquez. I'm hoping to keep the enthusiasm going. I'm very excited about the OCPS 23 strategic plan that we've been working on in collaboration with you and all of our community stakeholders and industry sector leaders tonight. So I look forward to sharing our OCPS 2030 strategic plan this evening. It's been an honor again to work with Superintendent, School Board, Staff, Students, Families, Communities, and Industry Sector Leaders on the development of our plan that continues to raise the bar and set high expectations for our goals in service to the citizens of Orange County. I would also like to acknowledge and thank Dan Antwhistle from Curium Solutions for being an incredible partner in this process. Dan's in the audience tonight, so thanks, Dan, for all of your help and also for being a parent who chooses Orange County Public Schools. Thank you, sir. Our process began during the 2023-24 school year when we gathered extensive feedback from our family, staff, students, and industry sector leaders via surveys and focus groups relative to the desired qualities of an Orange County Public School graduate. We further partnered with Hanover Research to benchmark our feedback across portraits of a graduate across the nation. The resulting first ever OCPS Portrait of a Graduate lays the foundation for the development of our OCPS 2030 strategic plan and will be the beacon that continually calls us back to our plan. Our portrait expects our graduates to possess essential skills in communication, critical thinking and problem solving, personal and social responsibility, professionalism and collaboration, academic foundations and literacy in mathematics, and includes workplace readiness relative to career preparedness, technology skills, and bilingual abilities. Our vision for the OCPS 2030 strategic plan is that every student graduates inspired and prepared for a thriving future. Our mission, together with our families and the community, we empower students with a superior academic experience, essential life skills, and boundless opportunities. We also have value statements in our strategic plan that we are united in our service to fulfill. The value statements are safety, where we prioritize the health and safety of our students and employees; people first, where we regard relationships as a foundation for our success; integrity, where we act upon evidence-based decisions while holding ourselves accountable; collaboration, where we listen to understand all perspectives as we work together towards our vision; and excellence, where we deliver the highest standard of service to our students, staff, families, and the community. Our plan also includes our market differentiators which separate us from the competition. We offer community and neighborhood schools, the highest quality of academic arts and extracurricular activities, outstanding support services for all learners, state-of-the-art facilities, and expansive choices and individualized learning experiences. Our commitments, our team is committed to high expectations for student mastery, a safe and supportive environment, a purposeful and student-centered team, efficient and fiscally sound operations, and an engaged and invested community. Our plan is comprised of the following five key performance indicators. 12th grade students meet our Portrait of a Graduate. Students perform at grade level or above on state assessments. Orange County Public Schools remain the top choice for families. We minimize preventable employee turnover, and our students attend 90% of their scheduled instructional time, at least. So let's take a closer look at our first key performance indicator. These strategies and measures that are affiliated with each key performance indicator will give us the ability to be nimble and flexible to environmental factors. They will serve as 12-month initiatives on a continuum of rigor that will strengthen our plan as a continuous improvement model. The first strategy for the first key performance indicator that our 12th grade students meet our Portrait of a Graduate attributes is to inspire students to improve the environment, reduce district costs, and make a positive social impact in our community. We will begin by measuring this via participation in sustainability classes and initiatives. Our second strategy is to offer and support advanced and accelerated course participation and performance, which will be measured via participation in performance in Cambridge, Advanced Placement, Dole Enrollment, International Baccalaureate, and Industry Certifications. Our third strategy for this key performance indicator is to guide post-secondary planning, which we will begin by measuring by the percent of students with a post-secondary plan. Our final strategy is to foster student resiliency via our Orange County Public Schools Resiliency Days, which will be measured by having an increase in students' resiliency, skills, and knowledge. Looking at prior data, we will come back to the board this summer and adjust these targets if needed based upon data at the conclusion of this year. But looking back on past data, our 25-26 target is currently proposed to be 23%, which we want to increase by 3% annually, resulting in 35% of our graduates possessing at least five out of the nine Portrait of a Graduate attributes. Let's take a closer look at our next key performance indicator, which is on our state assessment data. The first strategy is to utilize our professional learning communities to implement standards-based Tier One instruction in each classroom daily with necessary Tier Two and Three interventions to support student learning, which will be measured by our FAST outcomes, algebra and geometry on the course exams, graduation rate, and schools all being rated C or higher. Our second strategy for this key performance indicator is to deepen implementation of science reading practices across schools, which will measure by the participation in our Science of Reading training. Our third strategy is to ensure students get the nutrition they need to help support their learning experience, which will be measured by an increase in the percent of meals served at lunchtime as a percentage of the average daily attendance. Our fourth strategy is to ensure full utilization of available financial resources, which will be measured via an increased number of students being served on outcomes-based contracts, the dollars raised by the foundation for Orange County Public Schools, and also the percentage of procurement savings. Our final strategy for the second key performance indicator is to increase the number of data points available for ad hoc reporting, which will be measured via having an increased number of data points stored in our data repositories that will enable our educators, administrators, district leaders to access student performance data. Looking at prior data, we are proposing an initial target of 56% with 2% increases annually, resulting in an annual goal, a five-year goal of 64%. Our third key performance indicator is to remain the top choice for our families. Our first strategy for this key performance indicator is to ensure that all schools provide the best learning environment for students, which will be measured by the percent of schools without an identified deficiency on our compliance inspection reports, work order completion time, and the satisfaction levels of our staff, students, and families. Our next strategy is to increase our volunteers and partners in education, which will be measured by the number of volunteers and partners in education at each site. Our third strategy is to utilize artificial intelligence as a productivity multiplier, which will be measured by identifying routine business processes that are suitable for artificial intelligence assistance. Our final strategy for this key performance indicator is to focus enrollment marketing efforts in highest need school zones as measured by facility utilization rate and also having an increased enrolled versus resides rate at identified schools. Looking at prior data, we're proposing an initial target at 77%, which would remain for the first two years. We'd move to 78% for years three and four with a five-year goal of hitting at least 79%. Our fourth key performance indicator is to minimize preventable employee turnover. And our first strategy is to provide available affordable housing for OCPS staff, which will be measured by the number of options we can provide. The next strategy is to focus on the retention of all OCPS staff as measured by gauging the effectiveness of the alternative certification pathway, our bookkeeper and school secretary mentoring, and the school leadership development program. Our third strategy is to shorten the amount of time to fill vacancies with a priority on our instructional openings as measured by exceeding the average for time to fill rate nationally. And our final strategy for the fourth key performance indicator is to provide increased opportunities for stakeholder feedback, which we will measure by having increased stakeholder satisfaction and also the number of opportunities to provide feedback. We're proposing an initial target based upon our previous data of 90% for the first two years, moving to 91% for years three and four, and concluding with a five-year goal of 92%. Our final key performance indicator is that our students attend their scheduled instructional time. Our first strategy for this key performance in at least 90% of their scheduled instructional time. Our first strategy is to decrease the number of days missed by staff because of preventable illness, which will be measured by the percent of our benefited employees enrolled in People One Health, and also increasing the use of our district wellness resources. Our next strategy is to increase student engagement, which will be measured by our secondary student satisfaction ratings on stakeholder surveys. Our third strategy is to increase our school climate and culture perceptions, which again will be measured by our secondary student survey rating for school climate and culture. Our fourth strategy is to ensure our digital devices are available for staff and students, which will be measured by providing digital devices to match student population and staff on a quarterly basis. And our final strategy for this key performance indicator is to develop a system of notifications and support for students who exhibit patterns that point toward chronic absenteeism, which will be measured by decreasing the percent of students that are chronically absent by grade level. So looking at our current data, our initial target is 80%. We're looking at 2% annual increases, reaching at least 88% of our students attending at least 90% of their instructional time in five years. At this time, I will turn the presentation back to Dr. Vasquez and look forward to your questions and discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Border, to you and to all of the chiefs. I know that there has been ongoing conversations trying to ensure there's a balance between setting the bar high and also making sure that they're attainable goals. I will tell you that some of the numbers are a little concerning, but when we're looking at our data, it is a stretch, especially when we talk about the qualities we want our students to have when they graduate, that Portrait of a Graduate. And so we know that we would love to see higher numbers, and we expect that as we're all working together, we will get there. But right now, some of those targets that we are looking at, the mindset and the culture isn't that students, for example, participate in voluntary hours or that they take a second language. And so we really want to ensure our students have a mindset of what the community and what the workforce is looking for, regardless if your path is to go to college or if your path is. path is to work on certifications or to go right into the workforce. I also want to thank the board for the courageous conversations that you have had and how you have pushed us on some of these areas to stretch a little more than we thought we could. And so now we are open to hear any of your comments or further conversations and questions on OCPS 2030.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Let's start with Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions. I don't know that the information will be accessible, but if not, you can just email me or email the board. So we talked about the secondary, the post-secondary plan and how we're going to collect that data. What do we have a place to collect that data? How will we collect that data?
Thanks, Ms. Gallo, for your question. So Zello is a state platform that we will be utilizing, and so we will be able to collect the information in there as to whether our students have a post-secondary plan.
And for students, because Zello is just used when you know you're going to college. What about for the students, or maybe I'm wrong, or what about the students that are getting, maybe going into the workforce or have industry certifications? How are we tracking their post-secondary plan?
So thanks, Ms. Gallo. I'll follow up and get additional information on Zello. My understanding, though, is Zello will allow us to indicate if they have a post-secondary plan, no matter what their interest is, whether they are headed to the military, whether they're headed to career, whether they're headed to college to get a career later on. All of that would, my understanding, can be and will be encompassed within Zello for our post-secondary plans.
And all high school seniors get on Zello?
So they have the ability to get on Zello and explore, our students. I don't, for the strategic plan, that's not the metric we're looking at as far as their use of it, but looking at, do they have a plan in Zello, which will be part of our Student Services team that does that as they work with our students.
Okay. But we could have students, so we're only going to get the data on the students that choose to use Zello, right? How do we plan on getting, if every student doesn't use Zello, how will we get the information from them on if they have a post-secondary plan? Because chances are, if you're on Zello, you probably do have a post-secondary plan. So I'm just trying to ensure that we're capturing all the data and that the data's not flawed or is not skewed because we're only asking those that have one.
And so that I don't go astray, although I'd like to attempt to give my answer and then see, but I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bridges, who will keep us off.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Border. Zello is actually, this year, it's grade three through 12, and it will be K through 12 starting next year. And so we have all students, we've created lessons for every single year, so they start, they can start in kindergarten, and it's not all college-based. It's looking at careers, it's looking at interest levels, interest surveys and everything. So once we get to the middle school, the state of Florida requires that eighth graders have a unit of college and career planning, and they have to have a post-secondary plan at the end of that. So all of our eighth graders will be on Zello, and they'll create their post-secondary plan at that point. And then in high school, they can keep returning to it and returning to it and making changes and, you know, those type of things. So every student is required to have a post-secondary plan. Again, you know, we may not get to 100% the first year. You know, this year, we're just trying to get everybody on to do their surveys, you know, every student, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward.
Dr. Vasquez, you recognize?
Yeah. And part of our work is going to be to get the information out to them, because one of the things that's come out in my conversations with my student town halls is that they are not aware of all the resources that we do have and all the information. And so part of our strategy is going to be to not only engage the counselors, but to be able to provide tools, use social media more so that we can advertise, and they are more aware of what the tools are. And yes, they're required in eighth grade. We really want to then be able to extend that. So when they're starting high school, that tool is something they're very familiar with. They can start to refine and fine-tune the courses, the pathways that they're taking. And so that's why it's going to require all of us changing the conversation.
Perfect, thank you. And then I have the Science of Reading. How are we doing with training our teachers? Because I know that's one of the metrics for, you know, third grade, and it's so important. So I was just curious as to how we were doing and where we are currently.
Dr. Vasquez?
Well, I'm wondering, should I wait or should I? So we actually, I'll ask Dr. Brown Cannon to come up for a minute, our numbers. We actually have an update on our last round. And Board Member Gallo has won the award.
What? I thought we should have a drum roll.
I promise this was not a plant at all, but we really have done very well. And we had, in Board Member Gallo's area, we had 19% of the instructional staff that was trained in that last period of time. Board Member Salamanca had 15%. Board Member Farant had 14. Board Member Douglas had 8%. Board Member Felder had 12%. Board Member Vanos had 11%. And Board Member Bird had 13%. So we're making great strides in training our staff, and we're going to continue with that. But this was part of my report, but we'll give it to you now.
Is Member Salamanca watching us? I need to know. Is she on? She is? Tell her to hold on, I want to show her my award. I'm sorry, this is the best day ever.
Thank you. Let me show. Do I get credit for my daughter, too? Because that might bump me up, because she took Science of Reading. It's in Vanos's district.
You already won, so let's, we'll let that one go to Board Member Vanos in her district.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I'm just holding it up for Member Salamanca.
That's great news. That's, because I really am a big believer that the Science of Reading and what we're going to be able to accomplish with that.
I don't know if you want...
Oh, I was just going to say, as of January 16th, we have had 2,391 instructors attend our Science of Reading training. And then as a reminder, all of our elementary teachers are being trained monthly by the school-based reading coach.
Okay. That's great. That's great news. That's awesome.
All right, Member Vice Chair Bird.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so first, I was wondering if, I know that we did this before, we had a work session on the Portrait of a Graduate, but could you just give a little quick, brief information about how we got that Portrait of a Graduate? Because I think it's so important that we, when we are sharing this out, that we share out that this came from our business leaders in our community, what they're seeing from our graduates, what they want to see from our graduates, and other input and other stakeholders. But could you just share a little brief tidbit about that and how it came to be?
Thanks, Ms. Bird, absolutely. So we worked with the board and identified our industry sector leaders. We also utilized our district information for businesses supporting the district. And so we had industry sectors covering the gambit across central Florida, and we surveyed them and got their feedback. We also had focus groups with industry sector leaders as well. And so that was a driving force behind these skills that they're looking for in their employees, which may be referred to as durable skills or hard skills, but the piece about being able to communicate, being able to collaborate, being able to critically think and problem solve, are essences that we want in our Portrait of a Graduate. So yes, to be strong in literacy and math, that was also emphasized, but to have the other durable skills so that they're going to be able to be successful in their careers.
Thank you. I think that is just such important information to share with our parents and our teachers and our community, especially as we try to, you know, reframe how we all are, all of our expectations and our future and what we're doing over the next five years. I think it's really important to know where it's all coming from. And then as far as speaking to that, as the goal is that graduate, and we are talking about our, having a plan, post-secondary plan, and using Zello as a resource, which is great. You know, I've been advocating for something like this for years, so I am thrilled. I would definitely, I would, I would love to hear more when you, when the team develops that communication plan. I'd love to hear that, how we, how we communicate this to our parents, because I think that it's, I know I've seen, as a parent, I've seen it, I've seen an email or two with Zello in it, but not a lot of information, you know. So I think it would be, I'm really excited to see how we're going to communicate this to our parents so that they understand that this resource is here and to our kids. And, you know, speaking of Portrait of a Graduate, my students, when I meet with them and talk to them, they've also told me that they just don't know about things. But as I dug a little deeper in my last meeting with the students, I found out it's because they don't check emails, because they don't use email. And so they're missing a lot of communication that happens in school because they're not going to check emails. So I had a little mom moment with them and discussed the importance of checking emails. And I said, unless things drastically change in the business world or in the world when you graduate in the next five years, you're going to have to start checking emails or you're going to miss a lot. So we had a little discussion about that. But, you know, that's all part of what I think some of these things are that we're talking about, you know, teaching them these skills that they are going to need and making sure that they are aware of these resources like this. And definitely, you know, going through social media is great, but I think that we still have to back up and say, okay, let's talk about how we communicate in the world and what those employers are going to be expecting from you and how you communicate with them. And so I just wanted, I'm excited to see how all this comes together with the communication. And it was, it was great work. It was, you know, it was a lot of fun to sit there in that room and talk about, you know, our vision and what we want to see for these kids. And so I really thank you, because I know it was a lot of work for the team and for all of the staff to come up with these key performance indicators and how, and talk to us and hash it out with all of us. And, you know, there's eight of us in the room, and it's, it was a lot. So kudos to you for doing that for us. Thank you, Dr. Border.
Thanks, Ms. Bird. I mean, it was, it was a lot of fun, and I think we all had fun, because at the end of the day, we want our students, when they graduate from Orange County Public Schools, to be successful and be able to thrive and go after their dreams. And so I would add that a couple of the next steps, we are planning to cascade this across all divisions with, I'll be working with the chiefs on their senior leaders, engaging in that process. Then also, we're going to be building out teams for each key performance indicator that will be representative of all of our divisions, but they'll have a couple of key leaders. And so we're working on that process. And then I'll be working with Scott's team, and I know Scott's team's already hard at work. They developed the beautiful graphic of the Portrait of a Graduate that we have. And so they'll be working in tandem on a communication plan as we look to cascade across the whole organization so that come July 1, our strategic plan is ready to be embedded.
Absolutely.
I think it would be really neat if we could get some of those community leaders that took part in those roundtables and have little snippets of videos of things that they're looking for in our graduates as part of that communication. I think it would be really, really great to be able to hear actually from them, what they're looking for.
Thanks for that feedback, Ms. Bird. Thank you.
Excellent. Member Vanos.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this presentation, Dr. Border. I did not have the privilege of being part of this discussion when the plan was really being made, so I was just, you know, kind of trying to get up to speed in the last couple of months. But I just wanted to say, as the constant complainer about state mandated testing, which I will continue to do every minute I'm on this board, I really, really appreciate that out of the nine attributes you're looking for in Portrait of a Graduate, seven of them have nothing to do with FAST or whatever the latest state mandated testing is. And I really, really appreciate that. So I was really happy to see that. So thank you. I also, I also appreciated that in the Portrait of a Graduate, there's the, you recognize bilingual abilities, and Superintendent mentioned that, you know, we want to encourage our students to learn a second language. I also want to recognize our English language learners that have the gift, and it is a gift of already having a second language, and experiences that some of our students don't have. And just to recognize that that is not a deficit, but that's a positive attribute that those students have. So I appreciate seeing that as well. And I also like seeing, digging into absenteeism and the reasons why our students aren't showing up. I think that there's a lot of reasons I think it's important we're digging in. So I appreciated that. I did have a question about, and I want to just make a comment about Zello. It sounds like a great program. I also want to make sure that we, especially we're talking about eighth graders, eighth graders are 13, 14, that we are still prioritizing the importance of exploration in high school, that I know it can be stressful for an eighth grader, because I had one last year, to look at, look at her, you know, ninth grade plan and think that she has to kind of pick an area of focus. I believe that was on her plan last year. And that's stressful to think about, that you have to know what you're doing. So I just want to make sure that while I think it's great to develop a plan, that we're also encouraging our students to explore in high school and not feel committed to just one area. That's my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, Member Vanos. Appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely. Member Farant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Dr. Border, for the excellent presentation. I want to give just a shout out to Dan from Curium Solutions, who really helped facilitate the discussions for this Portrait of a Graduate. It was actually, I think, maybe one of my favorite things that I've done as a school board member, really digging into the why and focusing on the academics and why we're here to create these excellent students. So just shout out to Dan and Dr. Border for finding him. It was awesome. So just a few questions. I personally love, I would love to see more of our schools bringing in like a dual-language model. I know that's one of our focuses is to, you know, see that our students are able to speak two languages. It really is huge. I have several in District Three in elementary and then middle schools as well. But what would it take to bring a dual-language model into more of our schools? That's one of my questions. I'll just say all of them, since I'm on the phone, so that question. And then for the nutrition, when it says ensure students get the nutrition they need to help support their learning experience, how accurate will our measure of success be when we're looking, we're really just looking to see the number of school meals that are served at lunchtime, when we know that there are quite a few kids who bring meals from home? Is there a way that maybe we could calculate how many kids are bringing home lunch during the day? So that's my second question. And then just on the Science of Reading, I am so thrilled to hear that more of our teachers are being trained in the Science of Reading, and I just want to continue to encourage every teacher, even if you're not in pre-K to second grade, which I know that's kind of our focus, but even if you're in a different grade, I am just hearing from so many teachers about how beneficial this training is, and I believe this is truly the way forward. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing maybe some solutions to some of those questions I have.
All right. Dr. Border?
Thanks, Board Member Farant. So I'll take the last question on the lunchtime. This is a metric that's used, I believe, across the council school districts. And so all of our students, we provide lunch for them. And so we would like to see 100% of the students eating the lunch that's provided for them. But to Ms. Farant's point, they may be bringing other food. What we want to make sure is not happening is that students are not eating. And so we want to start with this measure to see if we can look at the percentage of, you know, how close are we to 100% of meals being eaten? And then for... And then from there, one of the, I think, the beauties of the plan that the board has driven is we have the ability to be nimble and adjust in this plan with our measures of success and strategies in multiple ways. We can sunset ones that we are mastering and bring in new ones. We also can retire ones that may not be getting us the value that we are looking for. We also can adjust to changes that may occur environmentally. The other part is we can also adjust the rigor of our measures of success annually because those are really 12-month engines that are driving the overall key performance indicator. So if we start with this measure, Ms. Ferrant, and, you know, say we find out 90% of our students are eating the lunch we provide, then it might provide us an opportunity in the future to dig into the other 10%, to see are they bringing lunch for home or what, what are they eating so that we can ensure the nutritional needs are, are being met to support learning. The second one, Ms. Ferrant, I will get back to you on dual language. I will, I think, concur with everyone that the dual language programs, you know, are fantastic for our students. And so I'll follow up with you on what that would take to launch additional dual language programs in District 3.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Ferrant.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got so excited about my award, I didn't get through all my questions. So a couple of things. So when we look at enrollment, because we know that our enrollment's declining, and I know that we're looking at different innovative ways to, to bring the students back. So what is our plan to getting those students back? I believe that we have a superior program, but how do we convince them that this is the right fit for them?
So thanks, Ms. Gallo, for that question. And Scott's, Howlett's team is currently working with some schools where we look at resides versus attends rates. And they are looking at marketing efforts, promoting the great things that are happening at the schools, getting the word out in the community to ensure exactly what you said, that our families know about the great, the best opportunity for their kids and that we're making sure they, they have that information. And, and we are continuing to explore ways as a district that we can connect with families who reside and are not attending our schools, again, to make sure that they are aware. You know, we, I believe this, the board, the strategic plan, should the board approve tonight, in my opinion, is, I think, one of the ones that I've seen around the nation, if not the one, that is setting high expectations, which is a catalyst for driving culture and the spirit of collaboration that we want across the district. And this will certainly, you know, lead us to further collaboration because we have to get the message out to all of our families from early on about the great offerings we have and ensuring that they know what's available in Orange County Public Schools. So I'll take that back for further follow-up as well.
Thank you. And I just want, I know that we're looking at programs that would allow some of our homeschool and others to take classes that they need in person with OCPS. I just want to make sure that when we look at the metrics, that we include those metrics because those students that come to take classes from us, we, we should consider them, you know, part of our students. So just ensuring that that metric's being tapped into.
Yeah. And Ms. Gallo, I would add on that too, to say that a couple of the measures of success that are going to be under this KPI to start is our facility utilization rate in addition to the resides, attends. And so we are looking at ways we can tap in to other opportunities to bring kids into our schools so that then maybe they will, they will be able to see what the opportunities exist for future opportunities.
That's great.
And if I could add on, we were recently made aware, and there's a couple of different companies that are doing this, but that have worked with some of the districts that we know, that that is what they do. They will go out, they will seek out students that have left or who reside in our area. And if they bring them back to our district and they register and stay for at least a period of time, then we pay them a portion of the FTE. Part of what they do also focuses on professional development, on customer service, things that we may not be aware of. And this is primarily for the administrators, things to look out for. And we have had a couple of meetings with a few different organizations. Once we have our final conversations, we'll bring that to the board, but we believe that's another way that we're going to be able to tap into parents who either have not chosen OCPS but reside in our area or those who have left. And I've also talked to the board about some of the private partnerships with some organizations for pre-Ks that would be in some of our schools. That also gives us an opportunity to introduce them into our public school when they're in pre-K, help them engage with the community and see all that we have to offer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's great news. There's great things happening at OCPS. And I agree, I think that our, our strategic plan, bar none, is one of the best out there. My, and I want to touch on the absenteeism. I'm very happy that this is a criteria that we'll be measuring, but when we look at chronic absenteeism, it's not just, and I've said this before, not just the students that are absent, it's also the teachers that are absent. So I would like us, and I don't know what it would look like or if it's possible, but I would, I would like there, and I think I mentioned this in one of our meetings, I'd like there to be a metric, maybe a survey or something that kind of looks at the quality of the PD that our teachers are going to, because if we're going to be pulling them out of class, that, that is attached to chronic absenteeism. It's not just the students, it's the teacher as well when they're absent. So I would really like to look at the quality of our PD, whether that's through a survey or something, because teachers don't like to be out of class. They really don't like to be out of class if they don't find that what they're attending is quality PD. And, and not quality in the sense, is it a good program or not a good program, but quality in the sense is, did this benefit me? Can I take this back to my classroom? Is this useful? And will my kids benefit from this day of training that I received?
Thanks, Ms. Gallo. We, we can definitely come back and look at opportunities that we have to do that. Absolutely.
And if I may, as, as you are aware, there's not a great deal that we mandate as training. I also know that our Chief of Staff, Mr. Bixler, has been looking at some of the trainings offered for the begin, for people that are new to OCPS. And he's made some significant recommendations of things that, based on feedback, are not as relevant or teachers are not finding or employees useful or helpful. And so those changes are coming about, I believe, in the next year. He just stepped away, but yes, we, we've definitely been looking at what we're offering and anything that is mandated, how can we make it worth their time?
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Vasquez. And thank you, Dr. Border. This was a great presentation. I appreciate it.
Thanks for, remember.
You and your team.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Douglas?
Thank you, Dr. Border, for this presentation, the Portrait of a Graduate. It looks really great. And thank you for your team.
Oh, your microphone.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Border, for this presentation and for the Portrait of a Graduate. And we thank you and your team for what they have done. I noticed that your numbers, your data started in '25, '26. Is there any data before that, '23, '24, that we can gauge to see where those numbers come from and how you develop the other numbers that you have?
Yeah, absolutely. Board Member Douglas, thank you for that question. We, we looked at two years of data leading into this current year to determine what would be a good proposal for a goal and a target. And you mentioned the team, a couple of you did. I have a, get to work alongside an incredible team with Senior Executive Director, Dr. Jennifer Sasser, and then Senior Director Ben Allen, who is doing a strategic data project right now at Harvard University. And part of that is focused on strategic planning. So he has been instrumental and was in our planning sessions with us as well. And moving forward, speaking of data with the new strategic plan, it will include interactive dashboards as part of the OCPS 2030 Plan that will be forward-facing on the KPIs, which will allow us. But yes, we did look at two years prior data, and we have methodology established for each of our KPIs. So that's what we're following with that data. We will be developing as a next step, the targets and goals for these measures of success, which we'll come back to the board in July when we activate the plan or prior to, because that's what then we'll be reporting on to you throughout the year in addition to the KPIs. But we're also going to revisit at the end of this year and see if we need to adjust any of the proposed targets from what happens this school year.
Okay. Please, if you could share, I'm a visual person. In order for me to understand, I need to have the whole picture in front of me so I can see where those numbers come from.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Got it.
And the second one is that I love the idea of learning a second language for the student because it develops a different part of the brain and allow them to learn more, to learn easier math, reading and other, other subjects. How can we make it happen in elementary schools? Because we know that we have AP languages, like AP French, AP, you know, Spanish and Portuguese, I think. How can we make it happen in elementary school, having the student learning a second language?
Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board Member Douglas. I know that is one of your priorities. You want to be able to expand second language opportunities at the elementary level. There are a couple of constraints when we look at a broad stroke across all of our schools. Number one being teachers that speak that second language, who are certified and who that's what they want to teach. We are in the process of investigating which schools currently are offering at the elementary level a second language, either on the wheel, as a club. Dr. Brent Cannon and I met last week. Based on that feedback, as well as Mr. Greg Moody is, has data from some of the surveys we give our parents about magnets, then we'll be able to start having conversations with some of those elementary schools to see if they want to do some type of academy within the school. We do offer dual language, and we've had some schools where it's been successful. We have also had some schools that, once they get into the third and fourth grade, it kind of fizzles out and then becomes more of a foreign language. So we're, we're in the process. We are limited in time at the elementary level because of some of the mandates that are there with required intervention for reading, required intervention for math, the reading block, the math block. And so it has to be something that can be incorporated either through the wheel or through a dual language program.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Yeah. Member Vanos?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up on, just actually to follow up on what was just discussed about the dual language programs. You know, I would just suggest looking at schools that already have a, a academy-type program set up. We, you know, elementary schools, I mean, Hillcrest comes to mind as already having it set up, what's working for them, what's not working for them. And, and I know that, that they can share the difficulty in finding the teachers who are certified to teach elementary school but also speak the second language. That's been a challenge always. But, but maybe to, you know, think about how we, we fund those programs that already have the infrastructure and then what we can learn from them because they're already a little bit farther along than a, than a school that has not experienced this yet. Also wanted to follow up on Member Gallo's question about how we are keeping families, you know, what we're going to do to make sure our families are choosing OCPS. And I think it is wonderful to share all the good things that OCPS is doing. I also think, I also think it's important to share information about statistics, readily available statistics about students who attend voucher schools. For example, that, you know, 60-some percent of students who are attending voucher schools return to public schools after two years and they're behind their peers in academics. Or for example, that, and I think it's around 70% of our voucher schools are not accredited by the agencies. And again, because it's, our system is set up in such a way that it's hard to, these schools really aren't held accountable or they're really not transparent at all to our parents. I think it's important for us to share that information so that when parents are making decisions about whether they're going to go to public school or whether they're going to take voucher money, they can really see and understand what that means. Thank you.
Thanks, Board Member Vanos. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Excellent suggestions. I think one of the challenges is having access to those parents at a time when they're making a decision. But the information is, would be invaluable. And I don't know if there's any other platform or ideas, and maybe we can also work with communications to see if there's a way of, of getting that message out on a broad scale because it's just eye-opening. And I think, frankly, I think it's a game changer. And not from the standpoint of our benefit, but from the standpoint of our student, our, you know, collective students' benefit. So anyway, thank you for that great suggestion. You know, I had, you had mentioned that you, I think you mentioned, Member Vanos, that you hadn't been through the previous process, and I, I have. And I was so excited when I joined OCPS to know that, I knew you had a strategic plan because part of my campaign, I was like, let me, let me see. And I was really excited about it. And then we, we developed a new one. But this process was so much more engaging with the board. It was such a deep dive. And, and just the material, besides what we developed, the learning process for me as a board member was just much richer and probably the best education that I've gotten throughout my time here. So I want to commend you and, and your team for the work that you did on this and the Superintendent in particular for bringing this process about. I mean, and Dan, you made it fun, okay? I have to admit, it was fun. That was not a fair comment earlier because when I think back on the process, I think to the public, they probably look at this and they're not all jazzed up, but the process itself. And, and, you know, the collaboration is one of those, we, we talk about how important that is, but it was an opportunity for this board to, to gel and to really work together with the whole team. So besides the, the outcome, the process itself was invaluable in so many ways. I think, yeah, I think, I think I'm the last one to close out, so I just want to say thank you for a great job. And Mr. Palmerini?
Member Ferrant wants to speak.
That's fine. Absolutely. Member Ferrant, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. I just had a quick question. So Member Vanos had just mentioned the statistic of 60% of kids attending voucher schools come back to public schools and are behind. I would just love to see the data behind that and if she has some sort of, you know, data to back that, that statement up. I have not seen that in my experience, but I'm just curious where she got that from. And I think as a school district, we need to be focused, you know, checking out, you know, how we can better serve the, the community with the surveys and whatnot. I think that's excellent. But really focusing on how can we make our schools better? And when we see that, you know, our schools are really rising and, and parents can see that their reading and math rates are accelerating and not dropping, I think we will see a rise again in kids coming back to public school. But thank you. I'd love to see that data.
Member Vanos?
Yes, I will be happy to share that with you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? All right. Dr. Vasquez, do you have anything you want to close us out on this subject?
Other than to say thank you, I really am extremely excited about the strategic plan and what it holds for our students and our community. I do agree with what Board Member Gallo and Dr. Border said. I do believe it is one of the best in the country. And I am honored to be able to lead the team that's going to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair Jacobs. Members of board, Superintendent Vasquez, thank you very much. Appreciate the feedback and conversation.
Thank you. Okay. And speaking of putting, putting the right people in the right seat on the bus, did an excellent job. Yeah. 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 I mean, Dr. Border, I've been really impressed with you in this role. really impressed with you in this role, so thank you. All right. We are on to the consent agenda. And do we have any comments on the consent agenda?
Yeah, we have one speaker, Madam Chair.
All right, wonderful. Who is our speaker?
Dr. Jim Moyer.
Okay, that's what I thought. Dr. Moyer, welcome back. It's been a pleasure to have you here throughout the meeting. Your body language has been very helpful also.
Oh, thank you. It's my pleasure. I'll just share with you why I stayed, what I'm not and what I am. I'm an auditor and accountant by profession. I spent most of my adult life as such. I, I'm not a school auditor, but I originally became a licensed CPA based on governmental experience in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In fact, I was the first person ever to be certified as a public accountant in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania based entirely on, on internal audit experience in the Commonwealth. Except for the Department of Auditor General, that was automatic. That was 1986. Two years later, 1988, I became a certified internal auditor. And you have an internal audit department. I'm here to command your audit advisory group, your external audit advisory group, and command your internal audit department. I don't know any of those people personally, but I do know that the IIA, the Institute of Internal Auditors, updated their global internal audit standards on January 9th, only a couple weeks away. And they're bringing that before you for your approval in just a couple weeks. So I commend them and I would encourage you to approve their recommendation. Thank you for your time and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you again for your participation. And thank you for caring enough about public education to show up and provide your feedback. Thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments from the public before we take action on the consent agenda? All right. Then we have modified the consent agenda. We've removed one item that we'll take up, I believe, next. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Member Gallo, is there a second by Member Douglas? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Member Salamanca, are you still in line with us? All right, Member Ferrante, I hope you still are.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Motion carries with all members present and Member Ferrante voting in the affirmative. And the next item up is a item, can you help me out, Dr. Vasquez? I know it was pulled, but I don't know what its new number is.
We are going to address item 1701, a personnel matter. And we have the employee who is here to speak before the board.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Palmarini, we have not had this in some time. Can you help the board understand the process?
All right. So the process has been in the past that normally you have called up the superintendent's staff to describe the personnel action that's at issue. After the superintendent's staff describes the personnel action at issue, then the speaker would come up to speak to it. Then the board would deliberate on the process and whether or not to uphold the superintendent's recommendation. In this case, it's going to be for a termination.
Okay, all right.
We have to have a presentation from our school safety specialists every quarter. And Mr., I'm sorry, our school safety specialist is going to take this time during my report to be able to provide the board with an update.
Thank you.
Chief Holmes?
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Vasquez. House Bill 1473 and the Florida Administrative Code requires the school safety specialist or designee, and I am your designated school safety specialist, to conduct an annual unannounced inspections at every public school, including district and charter schools. The Office of Safe Schools is required to conduct these inspections triannually. The Office of Safe Schools provides a quarterly report, which is required to be reported to the district board in a public meeting. The following information contains the data from the unannounced inspections conducted by both the Office of Safe Schools and the District Safety and Security Compliance Unit for quarter number two for the dates of October 1st through December 31st, 2024. All right, they don't have it up there. So let's talk about the data. And we're going to start with the Office of Safe Schools inspections. The table on this slide represents the data from the visits conducted by the FDOE Office of Safe Schools. During quarter two, 30 of our schools were visited by the Office of Safe Schools. Seven of those schools, or 23%, had zero identified deficiencies, a perfect visit. Conversely, 23 schools, or 77% of those visited, had one or more items on the inspection that required follow-up. When the Office of Safe Schools conducts an inspection, the school safety specialist or my designee must respond in writing within three days, three school days, after receiving the written notice of a suspected deficiency or after the completed Florida School Safety Compliance Inspection Report is posted. The response must verify that the district or school has corrected the suspected deficiency or must include a written plan describing how the district will bring the identified school or schools into compliance. Let's talk about the district unannounced monitoring visits. This slide represents the data from the visits conducted by the District Police Safety and Security Compliance Unit. During this quarter, 99 of our schools were visited by the district police. 27 of those schools, or 27%, had zero identified deficiencies, a perfect visit. Conversely, 72 schools, or 73% of those visited, had one or more items on the inspection that required follow-up, and typically, it's one item. When visits are conducted by the Safety and Security Compliance Unit, the compliance inspector works with the school administration to correct deficiencies. Summary emails are sent to the principal after each visit, copied to the principal leader and executive leader, and professional standards if it's appropriate. In our efforts to be proactive and support schools, the Safety and Security Compliance Unit will be attending principal meetings to provide information, training, and of course, support for our schools. The Safety and Security Compliance Unit will also be hosting online Teams meetings in the form of a mini-training and Q&amp;A sessions targeted for APs or anyone involved in safety and security on the campuses. We are on schedule to complete our visits to all district and charter schools by the end of February 2025. After that, we will be revisiting schools who had identified deficiencies to support their safety and security on their campuses. And lastly, CTA has requested the district provide a more permanent solution to the safest area signs, as they've been falling off the wall and a whole variety of reasons. So we are looking for a new sign. The district will be developing and implementing a peel-and-stick option, which we recently sent one up to leadership to take a look at to see if they like the sticker. And if the superintendent has any comments or the school board has any questions or discussion, I'd be glad to take it.
Thank you, Chief Holmes. Appreciate the work you and your team are doing to help us comply with the law. Additionally, I get a report every week, and whenever the Office of Safe School visits, I also receive a report from them. And so we're monitoring and helping our schools comply with the mandate to keep our school doors locked. The safer signs, I know, has been a big concern, and we're working to have those signs put up, and so they're permanent. We don't have to worry about them coming down. Members of the board, any questions that you might have or any comments?
Madam Gallo? This is recent, okay, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Sure.
So our percentage of school, I know that we had more schools that were inspected, but our percentage went from 27 to 39% and went up. So I'm trying to get at, are we going in the wrong direction, or is it just because of the number of schools and the percentage? But looking at the percentages, it seems like it should go, like it should go up. If we had 39% that had no deficiencies, and this time we had 27% with no deficiencies, are we going in the wrong direction?
I wouldn't say we're going in the wrong direction. These inspections, everything has to be perfect.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
All right, so just one paperwork deficiency, as we like to refer to it, is a deficiency, and suddenly, it looks like we've got some bad stats. And to be frank, we're happy in the direction things are going. Obviously, we're trying to encourage our schools, and we've got some training coming up. We'll be working with the principals, we'll be working with the APs, and it'll get better.
Wonderful. I thought I just wanted to...
We have to have a presentation from our school safety specialist every quarter. And Mr., I'm sorry, our school safety specialist is going to take this time during my report to be able to provide the board with an update.
Thank you.
Chief Holmes?
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Vasquez. House Bill 1473 and the Florida Administrative Code requires the school safety specialist or designee, and I am your designated school safety specialist, to conduct an annual unannounced inspections at every public school, including district and charter schools. The Office of Safe Schools is required to conduct these inspections triannually. The Office of Safe Schools provides a quarterly report, which is required to be reported to the district board in a public meeting. The following information contains the data from the unannounced inspections conducted by both the Office of Safe Schools and the District Safety and Security Compliance Unit for quarter number two for the dates of October 1st through December 31st, 2024. All right, they don't have it up there. And we're going to start with the Office of Safe Schools inspections. The table on this slide represents the data from the visits conducted by the FDOE Office of Safe Schools. During quarter two, 30 of our schools were visited by the Office of Safe Schools. Seven of those schools, or 23%, had zero identified deficiencies, a perfect visit. Conversely, 23 schools, or 77% of those visited, had one or more items on the inspection that required a follow-up. When the Office of Safe Schools conducts an inspection, the school safety specialist or my designee must respond in writing within three days, three school days, after receiving the written notice of a suspected deficiency or after the completed Florida School Safety Compliance Inspection Report is posted. The response must verify that the district or school has corrected the suspected deficiency or must include a written plan describing how the district will bring the identified school or schools into compliance. Let's talk about the district unannounced monitoring visits. This slide represents the data from the visits conducted by the District Police Safety and Security Compliance Unit. During this quarter, 99 of our schools were visited by the district police. 27 of those schools, or 27%, had zero identified deficiencies, a perfect visit. Conversely, 72 schools, or 73% of those visited, had one or more items on the inspection that required follow-up, and typically, it's one item. When visits are conducted by the Safety and Security Compliance Unit, the compliance inspector works with the school administration to correct deficiencies. Summary emails are sent to the principal after each visit, copied to the principal leader and executive leader, and professional standards if it's appropriate. In our efforts to be proactive and support schools, the Safety and Security Compliance Unit will be attending principal meetings to provide information, training, and of course, support for our schools. The Safety and Security Compliance Unit will also be hosting online teams meetings in the form of a mini-training and Q&amp;A sessions targeted for APs or anyone involved in safety and security on the campuses. We are on schedule to complete our visits to all district and charter schools by the end of February 2025. After that, we will be revisiting schools who had identified deficiencies to support their safety and security on their campuses. And lastly, CTA has requested the district provide a more permanent solution to the safest area signs, as they've been falling off the wall and a whole variety of reasons. So we are looking for a new sign. The district will be developing and implementing a peel-and-stick option, which we recently sent one up to leadership to take a look at to see if they like the sticker. And if the superintendent has any comments or the school board has any questions and discussion, I'd be glad to take it.
Thank you, Chief Holmes. Appreciate the work you and your team are doing to help us comply with the law. Additionally, I get a report every week, and whenever the Office of Safe School visits, I also receive a report from them. And so we're monitoring and helping our schools comply with the mandate to keep our school doors locked. The safer signs, I know, has been a big concern, and we're working to have those signs put up and so they're permanent. We don't have to worry about them coming down. Members of the board, any questions that you might have or any comments?
Member Gallo, this is recent, okay, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Sure.
So our percentage of school, I know that we had more schools that were inspected, but our percentage went from 27 to 39% and went up. So I'm trying to get at, are we going in the wrong direction or is it just because of the number of schools and the percentage? But looking at the percentages, it seems like it should go, like it should go up. If we had 39% that had no deficiencies, and this time we had 27% with no deficiencies, are we going in the wrong direction?
I wouldn't say we're going in the wrong direction. These inspections, everything has to be perfect.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
All right, so just one paperwork deficiency, as we like to refer to it, is a deficiency, and suddenly it looks like, you know, we've got some bad stats. And to be frank, we're happy in the direction things are going. Obviously, we're trying to encourage our schools, and we've got some training coming up. We'll be working with the principals, we will be working with the APs, and it'll get better.
Wonderful. I thought I just wanted to hear you say it out loud. Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry, Dr. Armbruster?
I do. On behalf of principals, an example is, we had a deficiency at a school, I'm gonna call out the school, that on their last visit had the same scenario and wasn't labeled a deficiency. When it was questioned, they said they didn't care, and that wasn't our people. They said they didn't care now it was a deficiency. And so the schools are getting mixed messages depending on who visits. The other situation was a door that was broken, the work order had been called in, there was evidence and proof that they were working to get it right, and again, that counts as a deficiency. Excuse me. So I just wanted to share that it's not as clear on here when you look at numbers as it is in the reality of these principals and their staff trying to make this work.
Thank you, Dr. Armbruster. A suggestion, because this is fairly new data that we're seeing, and as you point out, it might be one single piece of paper, or it could be more serious, perhaps, I don't know exactly what I'm asking, but perhaps if you can be prepared to give us a little bit more depth into the deficiencies, because I just, there's a big difference between serious deficiencies that are going unchecked and the example of something that is being fixed. So that piece of information, I think Dr. Armbruster just provided, might be helpful to us as you're going through this. I mean, if we're talking about 50 schools, you're probably not going to be able to give us that in a coherent fashion during a meeting, but I think better understanding would be helpful. Does that make sense?
It does.
I'm not quite sure what I'm asking for, but I just, I hate for the, for anyone to walk away with the sense that our schools are less safe when the incidents that are being reported are less significant. So.
Did, I'm sorry, Member Douglas, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, okay. Again, I don't know exactly what I'm looking for. If you could give it some thought, just so that we have a better handle.
And we can do that. This is quarterly. I'll have to be back in the next quarter, so I'll return and try to give you a better look at what's happening. Plus, there's been a lot more inspections done.
Yes.
Since this quarter had finished and ended, so we're getting a better look at the overall picture.
Right. Dr. Vasquez.
Chief Holmes, do we provide individual briefings before the data is reviewed or no?
No, we haven't for this.
Okay, so I think that should be part of the protocol moving forward, so that if they are able to see their individual schools or, you know, data as a whole, I know we did it the first.
We did it the first time.
The first time, we did it.
We're moving into this.
And then this second time, I wasn't sure if the briefings took place, and I think we had made note of the, in our first presentation, that one offense constitutes not being compliant.
Assessor certificate wasn't in the file at the time the inspector came to look. They may have had the assessor training, they just didn't get it into the notebook. So it's things like that, and we have to keep that in mind.
So moving forward, let's plan that prior to the presentation at the public meeting, that each of the board members has an individual briefing.
Yeah, with that little bit more specific information would be.
Then we can talk openly about it.
Yeah. Member Gallo, anything further? Okay, yeah. Yeah, Dr. Vasquez, I think that would be a great way to handle it, and then hopefully these meetings are very quick. Anything else? No, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Vasquez, from your report?
I just want to highlight one more, one more point. We kicked off Let's Read OCPS earlier this week. It's an initiative that actually started out of something that Board Member Byrd was doing in her community, and so now it's spread to our entire district. We have the support of our two mayors, and I'm happy to say that thus far, we have had over 21,000 readers that have logged into Beanstack, and we already have over 1.1 million minutes that have been logged in by students and staff. So we're, well, we will see if we can disaggregate the data by board member district to be able to provide that update to you next time. But we're excited that we're all coming around. This initiative of reading, the board has for the last 18 months really spoken about the value of reading, whether it's the training on the science of reading, whether it's access to books, whether it's how valuable reading is. And so I'm very excited that this is now something spread across all of our districts, though. Thank you to Dr. Brown Cannon and her team that helped organize and put this together, and thank you to Board Member Byrd, because it was because of what was happening in Apopka that we've been able to transfer that across all of our district. That is the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Palmarene, do you have a report?
Yeah, very briefly. First of all, where was that happening first? Okay, just wanted to make, just wanted to make sure. On February 11th, there will be a work session before our school board meeting on a couple policies, policy JCA and policy, which is assignment of students to school. I don't have a red line planned for that. That was more just for the board to have sort of a discussion about various choice options with schools and, and, you know, what the board's thoughts are with regard to, are we going to expand choice? What does that look like? So this is more of a discussion point than anything else. So if you, what I'll be doing is I'll write you all a communication later this week to say if you have any ideas for that work session, for things that you want to discuss, to get them to me so I can make sure I have them laid out and, and, you know, the board members can guess the A, B, C, and D, and instead that could be a kickoff for your discussion. And then policy KCE, if you remember back to, I think it was August or September, that's our lobbying and ethics policy. We had a change that we were proposing to lobbying an ethics policy with regard to videos by not-for-profit corporations who were giving us free stuff. So we made the change in the language. We'll be bringing that back to you. But also, the board requested that, what was, what is required by state law with respect to lobbying and ethics, what is not. Vivian Kokotis, who is down over there, and I have been working through the list painstakingly, I might emphasize the word pain in doing it, to see what is required by law, what is something that the board established by policy, and if there is a difference between law and policy, for example, you know, gifts for reporting individuals under state laws, 100 bucks, and under your policy, it's $5. So that is all sorts of things that we were going to discuss. So you'll be getting a chart with, by the end of this week of, this is the portion of the policy, this is, is it required by law, yes or no, what's the statute, and then any notes that I felt were necessary. So you all will be getting that from me by the end of this week. Finally, just office organization and conversations with Superintendent and Mr. Salimbini. As you know, Jad Brewer is in, is currently under the facilities organization. What we're going to be doing is we are going to be taking the legal portion of his function and moving it under my operation. There will be a staff attorney three that does the legal work. The legal work will come off of Mr. Brewer. He will stay out in facilities in a manager, administrator role. So we will be getting an advertisement out to hire a staff attorney three for facilities and construction that will report to me here in the next week or so, and I will keep you apprised of the progress, and hopefully we get somebody in here soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report, and thank you for the update on the position. Member Byrd, is this new? I think so, right?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a couple more comments about what the superintendent already brought up with Let's Read OCPS, because we are very excited, but it kicked off yesterday, and hopefully many of you got to see Mondays with Maria, because I was a special guest, and that was super fun, and we even did the podcast, which was pretty exciting. I've never done a podcast before. So we are really excited that this, this initiative that started in District 7 a few years ago, that grew, it started in Apopka, but then last year it grew to all of District 7, and we had such great success. And I really want to thank the superintendent and the staff, because they were really open to expanding this program and, to the whole district, and really embraced the idea. And so I'm thankful for it, because I think that one thing we found last year in District 7 was, we had, our winning school was a middle school.
Wow.
Out of the whole district.
Wow.
Okay, so that tells you something. Also, that middle school happened to get an A last year, for the first time in, like, I don't know if maybe ever, might be ever, and they had the most reading minutes. So, you know, there's something to be said there, I think, as a former reading teacher. But I was just thrilled to see kids excited about reading. The community got really into it, the community, because what's so neat about this is that what we did last year was we opened it up to everybody. So you could download the Beanstack app, join the challenge, log your minutes, and donate your minutes to whatever school you wanted to. We had people reading from all over the country. So it was just really neat, and the community feel, it just, it was such a great program. So I'm really excited that we're doing it district-wide. I'm so glad with all the support we already have. I do want to say that I have talked to the district about, of course, making this a little more exciting for us up here at the board table. So we will be reviewing results. We're not sure yet how we're going to be doing that per district. It may be once a month, it may be, it's probably going to be once a month. But needless to say, there will be something special for the winning board member each time we review, and I believe we have a picture of it, that they are going to share. Oh, I already logged my reading minutes yesterday. Look at that nice trophy for the reading champion. So this was made and donated by our partner in Apopka Reimagined Community. So I will have that with me next time when we have results, and the winning board member will get to display that trophy. And then to get you all off on a good start, so you can start logging your minutes, like I have, I don't know if any of you have already logged your minutes, but I have. I have a book for all of you board members.
Oh, that's so sweet.
And this is a book for school board members that is actually recommended by Andrea Messina from FSBA, and we all got an email about it last week, so I ordered one for all of us to read. Great on their behalf. So there's some extras, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, so this might be able to get you, get you started, but remember, it doesn't always have to be a book. It can also be reading, yeah, it can be audio, it could be reading for.
Can we count John's emails?
Reading John's emails? Why not? We can count that.
Oh, wow.
Anyway, I wish all of us great success. I encourage everyone to download the app, and I believe we are going to show real quick the promo video for Read Around OCPS.
Hey, OCPS students, have you heard about the new reading challenge? It's called Let's Read OCPS. The Let's Read OCPS Challenge runs from January 27th to April 30th. Students, teachers, and families can participate by signing into Beanstack on Launchpad and logging the number of minutes you read every day. Reading is a great way to relax, learn, and grow. So make sure to log your minutes and help your school win. You might even win something too. So start choosing your favorite books and join the Let's Read OCPS Challenge between January 27th and April 30th.
I just, I just want to know, do I get a trophy, like, every month?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah. I either get every month or I get nothing. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very excited about the Let's Read. It's very fun, and thank you, Melissa, for suggesting this to the district and for the books. That was very sweet. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun. I was looking at all the promos this week on social media from OCPS and everywhere, and I was watching the news, and Channel 2 was doing promos on it, Literacy Week and this, every, like, every newscast, and it was just, it was so cool to see such an emphasis being placed on literacy and reading. So I applaud everybody who, who had a hand, Dr. Cannon Brown and her team, for all that they're doing to make this happen. I did want to give a shout out to East River. So last night, myself, Dr. Vasquez, Mr. Martinez, and Kelly, just, I don't see, I'm sure she's here, but we were all at East River, and they received an award. It was, it's called the, I want to make sure I get this right, it's called the Unified Champion School. And what they do is they receive a national banner from the Special Olympics. It's the highest honor that they can receive for schools participating in the Unified Champion Schools program. They are the, they're only one of 10 schools in Florida that received this award, and the only school in Orange County that received this award. And how they, how they get this award is by demonstrating a commitment to inclusion, by meeting 10 national standards for excellence, and they're receiving it, they received it for the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect for all members of the student body and staff. So there was a lot of work that went into it. It's a, it's a project that is done with self-contained students along with regular ed students. So I just want to applaud East River on their work. Thank Mrs. Ivory again for all her hard work with ESE. It's just, it's so heartwarming to see these kids work together, and then the school to earn this award for what they do. And just as a reminder, that East River also has the Special Hearts Farm Companion. It's called Falcon and Friends Farm, where we're trying to emulate what they do at the Special Hearts Farm. And so I'm just so excited, and I'm so proud of all the hard work that East River has done for this award and their staff, and everybody stepping up for the betterment of kids, and really, really pushing exclusivity out there for all of, all of our students. It's just, it's a great thing to see. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and say thank you to all the East River staff and everybody that participated in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Member Salamanca, you on the line still with us?
Loser.
Loser? Huh? Gone? Okay. Member Felder? We still have, by the way, we do have a couple things we do need to talk about, two committees that we are missing a person on. Member Felder?
I wanted to, since we were talking about districts.
Please.
I'm sorry. Since we were talking about districts, I did want to highlight something. They had pictures from Jones. Do you have it? Because I mentioned it at the last board meeting, but I didn't have pictures. Do they have the pictures? Scott Howard said he had, they had them.
Here we go.
Yes. If you guys remember last board meeting, the Bohemian Hotel, Grand Bohemian, and along with Commissioners Shannon Rose, Commissioner Bakari Burns, and Counter Commissioners Mike Scott, they wanted to honor the football players from Jones High. They played in the state championship, and so they wanted to give them a black tie dinner at the Grand Bohemian. So I just wanted you guys to see the pictures, because we're so very proud of them. Yeah, and we wanted them, we, Mr. Norwood said he didn't want buffet, he wanted them to sit down, table, like, different forks and spoons, so they could know how to, you know, what to do and how to use all of that. So I wanted you guys to see this, and we all got on our black and white. So I wanted you to see it. I'm so proud of them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, absolutely, absolutely. Member Vanas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, just based on something you said, are we in board member comments right now or are we not there yet?
Well, that's a good question. Well, that's a good question. We, we have two committees. Yes, by all means, make your comments. And then I do want to mention the two committees that we do need to appoint a school board member to. But go ahead.
Okay. I, so, you know, obviously what I've been hearing a lot about is just about the changes in policy with Homeland Security and ICE. And so, are you sure you want me to talk now?
No, please. Yeah.
And so I, I think it's something we need to talk about. I know that our schools feel like they need, that people in our schools feel like they need some more guidance. I need some more guidance as well. But I would also just like to express my just disappointment that the protected areas policy has been revoked. It was revoked last week because I think, you know, the status of our undocumented people that are living in our country is a complicated issue, it's a complex issue. But it just really saddens me that we are bringing enforcement into our schools where our, all of our children should feel safe and all of our children should feel secure. And in fact, that is really written into our Florida constitution. All of that said, I want to be clear that Orange County needs to follow the law and we sure do want to follow the law. So I think I would like to look at our protocols and procedures that we have in place. And I believe that we need to add some additional safeguards in those protocols so that we can be sure that we are complying with these sort of ever-changing, complex laws. So, you know, one thing I would, so I don't know how to start this conversation, but you know, one thing that I would like to suggest is that if someone from ICE or, you know, shows up at our school or a law enforcement person locally that is now showing up on behalf of ICE, that we are, first of all, not allowing anyone into our schools until legal, our district legal, is contacted and someone from legal goes out to the school, which of course they will do expeditiously, to make the first contact with anyone who shows up at the school. So that's, that's the first thing I would like to make sure we are adding into our protocol. And Mr. Paul Marini, if you want to respond, one at a time, it might be easier.
So if somebody shows up, I have no problem with the protocol saying our legal office will be contacted. The second part of me or somebody in my office going out there, I can't guarantee at any given one time that I can be in a position or somebody else in my office can be in a position to go out to those schools at that kind of moment's notice. I can guarantee that they can get ahold of our office through a telephone call. So I would feel more comfortable with, nobody responds until somebody from legal has been contacted and has given direction. But getting out to the school, I can't guarantee with any certainty.
I understand that. Can we at least, can that be the, what we would like to do even if it can't be done every time? So legal is contacted if they can come out to the school? Because I'm thinking about our principals and our teachers and our admin who are, you know, they're equipped to run excellent schools and to support our students. They're not really equipped to review administrative orders or judicial warrants or subpoenas. And I, I just, I, and again, boy, do I want to make sure we follow the law. I really just would feel more comfortable knowing that someone from legal is there or is reviewing these documents.
So, okay, it's on. So we would direct the schools, when they get documentation, scan them and send them to us immediately. That, that I think, we can review the documents and if I'm out of the office or I'm doing something otherwise, I have my phone with me and I say, hey, we've got an administrative order from ICE here. John, can you take a look at it? I can pull it up on my phone and give you advice right then and there. So I think the protocol, and that's what I anticipated anyways would happen. If we were to get a visit from ICE, that they would take whatever documentation ICE is providing, they would send it to us and scan it to us immediately. So yeah, I can put that in the protocol.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. The second, the second thing I wanted to ask about was I know in our protocols, it talks about wanting to, needing to see credentials. I think that we, what I would like to see, and I'll ask your opinion on this, is can we, I would like to see, in addition to credentials, does that include a judicial warrant? Or it's just, I don't think it's clear from what I read that that needs to be provided as well.
So what I anticipate coming out of this is that when they provide credentials, we, our folks would ask, is there anything, you know, I need to see student X. Do you have any documentation or warrant or anything like that? I can make that explicit. It was more implicit than explicit, but I can make it explicit.
Okay. I think that's, that's really important. And just to clarify understanding that the document that would need to be brought is a judicial warrant. Some kind of other order from an administrative agency is not sufficient to interrogate or, to interrogate a student, correct?
So under my reading of the law, they are able to issue administrative warrants and administrative subpoenas to talk to folks and that those would be enforceable on their face. The folks who would have the standing to challenge whether or not an administrative warrant or administrative subpoena was valid would not be us as a school district. It would be the folks subject to the warrant or subject to the subpoena. Meaning if it's, I think I put in one of my emails, there's like 49 separate, different officials under the regulation that can sign an administrative subpoena. If we were to receive that and I look and it says Acting Director of ICE, and I'm just making that up, I don't have the list in front of me. And it's got the seal of DHS and ICE on there. We would take that as sufficient as a lawfully issued subpoena and we would not oppose that. If other folks want, if the folks who are subject to the order wanted to oppose it, that would be on the parent. I mean, obviously the child's not following their own enforcement action, but that's not something that I would recommend that we step in the middle of.
Okay. So I, I guess my understanding was that the, if it was an administrative order, that it could only result in an arrest if an individual was named, but that it did not give the law enforcement or the law enforcement or ICE the ability to ask questions. But you're saying that's not the, that's, I'm not interpreting that the right way.
That's not the way I read it.
Okay. And I, and I just want to reiterate this, in our policy, it does say then that, so if, if a child is, is, if we have the judicial warrant or judicial warrant, then, and the child can be, student can be questioned, that we make an attempt to contact the parent first.
Yes. So the procedure that, that we have is, we ask if we can contact the parent first. And sometimes law enforcement will say yes, sometimes they'll say no for, for various reasons as part of their investigation. So if they say no to us, we're going to have them document that they, and sign a written document, it's a form that we talk about in our memo, that says that they have refused permission for us to contact the parent. In that case, if the parent is refused to be contacted, we will then ask if one of our administrators can sit in with the child, if the child's being questioned. And if the agent were to say yes, great, the administrator sits in. If the agent were to say no, we would have them once again document that they've refused to allow us to enter the room with the child. At that point, if they say, we're not letting anybody in and we're still interviewing the child, we're going to have a problem if we were to then step in and refuse it. Because that's, that's the place where we get into the obstruction portion.
In that situation where a child might be questioned, I would also hope that if, if anyone from legal is available, that they could be that person that's sitting in with the child as opposed to an administrator in the school. I know that you're, what you're saying is you can't guarantee that because we don't know what the future holds. But I think if it's possible for that to happen, we should try to make that happen.
I'm thinking through all the various permutations of that. One thing that does concern me is, let's take it out of the ICE context and let's say it's a normal law enforcement investigation. We typically do not, as a, as a district, and we have not in the past, sent lawyers into the room to stay with students who are being questioned by law enforcement. That has, under, you all have a policy and it hasn't been reviewed for a long time, but it's policy JIH on student interrogation and arrest where it's the, you know, parent is asked to be called and if it's not the parent, it's the administrator. So this would deviate from what our practice has been, it would deviate from what the express wording of your policy is. Now, if the board wants to revisit the policy in light of this, I mean, that's obviously a board decision. But we typically on a law enforcement investigation, do not send lawyers from our office down to sit with students.
Okay. I'd be curious to hear what, what other people think. I personally would prefer to have someone from your office in this situation. In a, okay, the next point is when, so if, if a student is, if there's a warrant and a student is questioned, I want to ensure that that takes place in the front office or in the front office building, that, that there's no access given to our school, to the campus. Because I know that's usually a separate building. So I just want to ensure that that's.
Yeah, no, that, that is the, I just want to make clear that what our, obviously we don't know what's going to happen. I will say this, from 2017 to 2021, thankfully, we did not have this occur, right? I can't predict what's going to occur. The presumption is, and how we're going to handle it, and what I would advise is, yes, that that interview occur in the front office. I do not think that the law requires us to allow an indiscriminate sweep of our classrooms.
And I think if, I agree. And I think we should add that to our protocol, just so it's very, very clear to everyone reading it, that, that that is not okay. And that these certain requirements have to be met. Two more issues I wanted to bring up. One has to do with, I know there were some bills that have been passed or some bills that have been talked about, about the potential for local law enforcement agencies to provide officers to enforce, to basically act on behalf of ICE. I am very, I don't know what we can do, but I'm, feel very strongly that these officers should not be our SROs. And yeah, so is there anything that we can do to talk with the law enforcement, you know, that we can protect that relationship that our students have with SROs?
So I think the first prudent course of action is, I was looking on the legislature's website tonight. It appears the bill has passed the Senate. It appears that the bill is, had a third reading in the House, but that they have adjourned without necessarily passing it. And that could just be the website hasn't been updated. And I certainly have been paying attention to what you all have been doing as opposed to going on the video feed to see it. But what I would suggest is whatever the law is that comes out, we analyze it fully to see what's in there. And then to the extent that there are, that there are concerns that our SROs could be essentially deputized to be ICE agents, that we have conversations with the sheriff and local law enforcement to see that we minimize that to the greatest extent possible. Now, given what comes out of the legislature, whether or not we're going to be able to do that, I'm not sure. But I can certainly, I certainly think conversations with our law enforcement partners about doing what we can to minimize disruption and, and, you know, not having an SRO who kids would ostensibly trust to come to information being worried about, is this SRO now going to take me away because I tell them, you know, my parents are undocumented and I'm scared, right? I think having a conversation would be worthwhile. But depending on what comes out of the legislature in its final form, I don't know if we, if the conversation would be something that we could do lawfully. So we'll have to review that.
Okay. Thank you. And just the last point I wanted to make has to do with, and I would hope that no one, that this would never be an issue in our schools, but in the unfortunate circumstance that someone who works in our school and a teacher, an admin violates our student privacy laws and provides information to, to ICE about a student's document, you know, status, that we have clear disciplinary measures in place that are communicated to our, to our, so along with the, the protocols that we will communicate to our schools, that also, this disciplinary procedure would also be communicated to our schools.
So just as the boards are aware, student information is protected by FERPA. Let me back up one second. Just, I know people are watching. We have something that's known as the Meta Consent Decree. It was a consent decree that the Florida Department of Education entered into in 1990 with the Department of Justice. And it did numerous things, one of which was it prohibited school districts from collecting immigration status of their children and maintaining documentation of that stuff, of that status. So we would be violating a consent decree to even collect that information. There's also an 11th Circuit case that talked about Alabama tried to impose on its school districts that you had to collect immigration status of students. And the 11th Circuit said, well, no, that violates the United States Supreme Court decision in Plyler versus Doe that says children, regardless of their immigration status, have the right to be educated in public schools. So for everybody, you all know this and Member Gallo made the joke about reading my interminable emails, but you all know it from my interminable emails, that there is federal case law and a federal consent decree that says we don't collect this information. Now, to the extent somebody were to release information without authorization, we have to have a subpoena under, under FERPA, a lawfully issued subpoena in order for us to release student records. Not only is that in the federal statute, as I also informed you, Section 908.108 says, notwithstanding any other state statute that says any local government can't engage and have sanctuary policies, education records still require, can only be disclosed in accordance with FERPA. So there would have to be a subpoena, a lawfully issued subpoena before we disclose records. Now, we have had numerous cases where employees, over my 15 years here, have disclosed student information improperly. That would go through professional standards. That would be a violation of our policies and they would be dealt with in a disciplinary manner. Now, what the discipline is going to be will depend on the facts and circumstances of each particular case. It will depend on the employment record of the employee in question. You know, somebody who has violated student privacy before may get a more severe penalty than somebody who's been with us for 30 years and has never done it. But that's all a case-by-case, factually specific determination. But that is something that clearly would go to professional standards and that there would be consequences for violating students' privacy rights because the statute also say students have a right to privacy in their educational records.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, when, when you're talking about student records and, and the privacy, that also includes information that a teacher, let's say, could just get from a student from being in the classroom. Like, oh, you know, talking, you know, the student was sharing their, their history or they, they learned something about the student through that, that would also be inclusive in that.
Yeah, that, excuse me, that would be included in that. Now, of course, if we got an order that, you know, that teacher's been subpoenaed, then we will have to deal with, you know, compliance with the subpoena at that point. But student privacy would encompass conversations as well. I.e., a teacher or any other employee should not be volunteering to law enforcement, the nature of that conversation. Whether they're forced to disclose it at a later date, that's a different question.
Okay. And I, and I guess that's it, just that key of that, the volunteering of information is not something that, is something that we will investigate and, and that a disciplinary action could result in termination of someone who worked, an employee.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's in the good hands of my vice chair.
Thank you. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It did, it's, the legislation's passed, both, both chambers. They didn't have, they didn't have veto majority in the Senate, so we'll have to see how that plays out. I haven't looked to see who voted for what, but it's, it's going to the governor. I, I just, I just want to say, I agree with Member Vannas. Anything that we can do to keep our kids safe and keep our kids trauma-free, it's just. Anything that we can do to keep our kids safe and keep our kids trauma-free, it's disturbing that none of these, the children in our schools, they're just children. They did not, they didn't ask me in this situation, they don't deserve to be traumatized, they don't deserve to live in fear. None of this was their doing, and so it's a little disheartening that we have to sit up here and have this conversation about how to keep our children safe from our government. So I'm hoping that we don't ever see anybody approach our schools. I'm hoping that everything that we're, we're doing is, is for good reason, and I hope and I pray that we never have to utilize it, and that this is, as a country, not what we're going to do in traumatizing our, our children. I, you know, there is a lot of misinformation out there right now, because the desk is trying to settle. Hopefully we'll have more information now that the bill has passed, and you've had a chance to review it and update the board. So we'll just see where the, but I do, I just sincerely pray that we don't ever have to have John, or Mr. Palmerini, get a call that says ICE just showed up at one of our schools. Because principals are scared, teachers are scared, and as quickly as we can put together frequently asked questions and get some more information out to our teachers to try to help relay some of their fears, fears surrounding this, that, that would be, that would be good. I think time, you know, time is of the essence. And again, I just, I hope, I hope that this isn't as a country who we've decided to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. I was cued in to speak, but I was just going to ask again about, as soon as we can get the FAQ and more guidance for teachers, because I'm also thinking, I'm also concerned about other times in the, in the day where, I mean, we just don't know. We just don't know is the problem. And there are other times in the day where school is not in session, but teachers are at schools with students, and coaches are at schools with students after school hours, that kind of thing. So it's not just necessarily administrators that might be the ones having to deal with this. So I think that whatever guidance we can provide for our staff is helpful. And I also want to just say a quick word. I know that this has been super difficult to maneuver, with all the moving pieces that keep changing every day, and now we've got more that we have to deal with tonight about it. But I appreciate, I wanted to just say, Mr. Palmerini, I appreciate that you, that you put out guidance, and I know that it was not taken in the light it was meant to by some in the community, and, and I'm sorry for that, because I personally felt better knowing that our school district was trying to be a little proactive in letting staff and know what the possibilities are, what the law says. If you do this, this is what could happen. That's important information to know. There was, there's a lot to digest in this, and I appreciate you taking the time to digest it for us and put out, and put out those, the guidance. I, I know it was, it's not been an easy time for anybody, but I just wanted to give you my appreciation for that. And then I just want to double up on what Member Gallo said, that whatever we can do to just try to keep it as peaceful as possible for our kids, I'm all in favor of. I also think that it's one thing to give out legal guidance, it's another to give out, put out a statement saying that this is, you know, we will continue to take care of our kids the best way we can while also following the law. I think that that might be a great idea, either on behalf of the board or the superintendent. But I think some kind of communication like that has to go out as well to reassure our families and our teachers and our administrators that we know this is difficult, such a difficult time, and we all are trying to navigate it the best we can, but that our children are of the utmost important, importance here. Mr. Palmerini, did you have something you wanted to say?
So, thank you, Member Bird. I, I think all of you up here know me, I, this is not what I wanted to do, this is not the advice I wanted to provide, this is not the situation I want us to be in. It's sort of hearkens back to the whole mask deal, right, for me? So this is not, you know, my preferred policy outcome, this is not what I would suggest. If I thought it would be helpful, I would suggest to you all that we lobby to get a change in federal law that says that schools wouldn't be a place where ICE enforcement takes place unless there's absent exigent circumstances, because I think that's the better policy approach. However, as you all know, it's not my policy preference that I have to provide you advice on, it's what I think the law actually is. And that's why you're receiving what you're receiving.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. So our plan is going to be to work, we've started an FAQ document already. We'll take feedback that we received from the board this evening, incorporate it into the document, we'll push it out to the board members so that you can review it and give us feedback with the plan to try and send it out if possible to our principals by Friday. It could be something that Dr. Armbruster shares, and then we can also share it with our, we ask that it be distributed to all of the staff members, and we can also work with both Mr. Pollard and Mr. McCracken on making sure they have it so that they can also push it out.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. Board Member Vanos?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Also just wanted to say that several board members from other counties called me this weekend, and we were the only county that had guidelines that were sent out. And so I really appreciate you, just to, to add on to what Member Bird said, I really appreciate that, and the conversations that we've had. I, I know that you're, you're working in the best interest of children in this case, and I really appreciate that. And the last thing I wanted to say was, I like your emails.
Okay, she's a lawyer though, I mean, come on. You got a fan, I mean, seriously. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are going to, the Chair is going to bring back her, her committees that she had next time, we, our next board meeting. Is there anything else that the board needs to discuss? Superintendent?
Just one last comment as it relates to immigration. We have had today two situations where either a board member or a constituent of a board member called or notified them that ICE was on a campus. And so we have a protocol that we're following. ICE was not on any one of our campuses. There's still misinformation about Chicago, ICE never showed up at any of the Chicago public schools. And so it, my, my recommendation is that if you receive anything, you see it on social media, you can certainly forward it to, to myself, we'll look into it, but they have been told, if ICE shows up, you notify our, our office. And so a lot of misinformation, which is causing a lot of anxiety, a lot of stress. We actually had a news station that was camped out in one of the school, in front of one of the schools that allegedly had ICE there, and ICE was nowhere around. So just be mindful that some of what's being posted and shared may not be accurate. We will keep you apprised if there is any ICE agent that shows up on our campuses. But if we start to get inundated with that, we may not be able to respond right away, but we will, once we're made aware through the legal department, that if ICE shows up on one of our campuses, we'll let you know.
Thank you for that. Also, I think that this, it's really important, as I said a minute ago, is the communication out from us. This is a perfect, this is the time where we need to be telling our story before other people tell our story. And I think that that has nothing to do with perceptions of us as much as it has to do with calming of fears. This is such a scary, scary time for so many of our community members, of our children, of their parents. And I think that if we can provide that information, that reassuring, no, there has not been, there has not been any ICE on any of our campuses, you know, let us get these stories out as much as we can, I think to calm those fears, I think, is something that we really need to figure out somehow, how to do that, in a way that'll hopefully make our community maybe feel a little bit better. I don't know. I appreciate everything. Superintendent, I know this is a difficult time, so thank you for your leadership during this, as we figure this all out together. If there's no further business, this meeting is finally adjourned. Good night.